...experience and information gathering. We have a lot of them on the agenda, so I'm going to hopefully ask everyone to do their best to summarize it faster, because we may even have to split the road to the water, so let's try to get done with three point five before we go out of order. So, guys, I'm really going to be great, and I really appreciate your time, but through the lead, trying to get this to a big screen.
Okay, so this is just a few of the master plan projects that we have planned for this year. They're not in any particular order, but they're close to mine. Most of these are shell, very close to being shell ready, it's not shell ready for our tax contract, so that's at least a master plan project. So, we're on the next one. The Don Tower, we are currently in the middle of replacing those valves, if we can isolate that. The other two towers can't be isolated after. Personnel, we've already spoken about personnel in those, really decent, this is the hardest work in, you know, just with dairy and for these lines breaking and everything. The next slide, this is where we get into the valve assessment. In all in all, we're almost about halfway done, we're about thirty-five percent. We have about one hundred and eighteen hopper valve valves, so the zoom hopper. And now that is a hub, broken, frozen, something like that at one. And in my good taste, we do have one hundred and twenty-four valves that have been closed, that we've opened, or pressured, or anything like that. The next slide will show you the valves, how much, kind of a fuzzy picture, but this is kind of what we have here. The blue ones are what we have assessed, that is, it's assessed and not. The red ones is where we have to fill, but when we get closer in the town, there are not more issues. So, we're going to end up finding, I think it's going to exponentially go up, taking out both valves and then out of.
Why would water valves be closed?
That's a very good question. There's several, there's several reasons, right? So, say, maybe, you know, for example, if we had a line break at one o'clock in the morning, and somebody did write down, or respectfully make sure that they went through and said, you know, I closed valve one, two, three, and then tomorrow, or that night, two o'clock in the morning, they don't go back to closing, be needing a valve. Or a contractor went by and showed a valve, maybe they were working on something, showed a valve, didn't tell us, again, it was shown. But I would say if any of the valves are closed today, it's because of an issue with it and it didn't open. Uh, next, we'll run on to the water rehabilitation master plan.
I was just asking, uh, you missing out on my period, uh, on these valves, just to leave the picture in our mind. Not far apart, I think.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just the thing from how we design valves in the national, you know, most of the time we're wanting between blocks, drag in neighborhood blocks or something to that nature, you know, in the neighborhoods now. We're talking in a linear line, you want with it, it would be five hundred, seven hundred, fifty-two. So, just because, especially, we don't want as many businesses without water. If there was a break in between, we can isolate it, maybe we have five. Uh, so here's our water rehab plan. You can look at anything highlighted in the blue, it makes a sweep. Uh, and the next page does show you, uh, so the, on the left side is the twenty nineteen master plan, that was the original plan, the original cost of the twenty nineteen. It originally had almost one hundred and fifteen thousand linear feet, with we completed, oh, about seventy, about forty-five thousand linear feet. But then the estimated cost had went up, uh, due to the open prices, things like that, and within that project. That price is almost the same, and we've knocked out about forty percent, so prices have come up eventually. Go with, you know, this time.
How much do we need to update or do a new master plan on this side?
So, on the rehab side, uh, there are things that maybe we need to add. Now, our department does, you know, we do see a lot that has had, I'm not sure, Metropolis had several on Main Street, uh, that was not technically included into the plan, but partial ones. So, then we have included that into our design, which is coming up, that street's coming up here very quickly in the next couple months. The rehab plan, I don't necessarily think that it needs to be renewed. There are things that may be added to the plan since, you know, since twenty nineteen, where we've seen divisional breaks or issues, but I think this is the one right now, three hundred and fifty.
Mr. President, five hundred and five.
Sorry. Money?
Do we allocate more fuel to the derrys?
Yes, sir, we handle these projects within our tax contract. So, we do get funds for that, that we get out of water. This year, we allocated three million, I do think we're going to have four million in it, just because prices went up a little bit more.
So, every year you're spending money?
Yes, sir, every year we are completing these projects with this plan, a new plan developed, uh, and with that three million, we're not going to have a lot of water. And then the same thing with this plan, same thing with this plan, this water, wastewater rehab plan. Uh, now, I, we haven't done as much, this plan, when they did this, was strictly only AC pipe. So, we have PCP with clay, uh, sewer, and then you have AC pipe, that's the, and you have some double iron, uh, depending on that. But this plan was to handle AC pipe, which is where we see a lot of the problems, which is using back, it's seventy, it has deteriorated exponentially to be, so this is kind of how they did that. Uh, we are working on that, as you know, water, having water, and some sewer things. So, that's why some of these projects have been pushed, or have been pushed, but we're, these are still getting on our plan. They do have another sheet behind it now. But when you're deep changing for most of these, because when we, when I looked at this master plan, uh, they did not calculate the nine linear feet in twenty nineteen, correct? So, that's why the linear feet is quite a bit more there, and then prices have, that's, that's what we're doing. Those are both of the rehab sewer. Next, we have the water capo improvement plan. Uh, I did give a big picture of that. So, on this, uh, in number two, number six, and number nine were removed from this master plan in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, sorry. Um, I'm not sure why they were removed, I was not, you know, it was a year, um, so I don't know why they removed. That's what your Vaughn, they just said they weren't needed anymore, so two, six, and nine. Now, of these projects, the only project that we've, I'm sorry, we've completed, seven and number ten. So, number ten is in the works right now, is the UConn competition. Uh, and then number seven, Evans Boulevard, uh, that, that is completed. Uh, it did ask for sixteen inch water lines to be put in there, uh, but when you're Vaughn and then you're growing the city, it's the same, all that, that sixteen inch ended up being modeled as a twelve, and so it is a twelve. So, it still works for growth, it still works for everything in that area, we just figured out that they wanted to do a twelve. But as the plan sits, we'll be done in the five years, two, we're still at one, and we're completing the UConn competition. Uh, the major next one that we need to complete would be that tower on northeast corner. That's, that is standing, that is nine, eleven, twelve, that was knocked out, plugged in, and it would also give us water and pressure on that northeast side of town. Any questions on that? This plan, I have spoken with your Vaughn, uh, and the engineering team, and they say this plan is still good today. Now, with future growth, planning, engineering, and things like that, we might need to take a look in the next five years. Uh, next, we have sewer capo improvement plans. Uh, this one we have completed, uh, more, so the first, second, and third one, my P, my Q, were both installed. Uh, that cost us somewhere around thirty-five million dollars. We did pull that from Pioneer Fund, then, uh, this is, these are major lines for the east side of town, it's huge. This was a hundred percent needed for growth, uh, so it was very carefully, I don't know if you did spend about thirty-five. Uh, so the rest of the projects really depend on how the city decides to grow. Uh, there's a lot of manipulation that needs to happen to get to that point. There's a lot of, like, ranges, are they going to be able to, uh, put it in as your neighborhood, or do? So, there's a lot of things that are in the planning works, um, as development continues. But I have spoken with your Vaughn and Joe and his team, they also said that this, this is still good. And if I hear that we continue to grow in the shape and form of fashion, then we will have to reevaluate. And last but not least, the dairy. The bottom drink from wastewater commission plant handles the city's people of wastewater. This plant processes wastewater, goes through steps, and takes place in the plant. Once the entire process takes place, the end product is only reuse for the reason of the line. This plant filters through an average twenty million dollars per square foot. So, we're giving about twenty-five to the plant, uh, in terms of depreciation system, because the resident doesn't, the rental uses it, we can put about seven million into this plant. Uh, we do have some needs there, uh, we, we are fairly, um, staffed in these areas, uh, but we do see with the new plant, you know, with new stuff coming on, or planning, that we're going to need product, product in these areas. Uh, the current projects, I'm really going to hit on, uh, just the, the largest one. Uh, that's what we're work, working on currently with PSI. Uh, I will be, not this coming council meeting, but the next council meeting coming to you with the contract, uh, to move forward with that. Uh, we do believe that PSI does have a very good, um, design, and here we sat down, scored services, and make sure that we're moving full, uh, in the right direction with all of those. But if you move a couple pages past, there is a, a vision, a master plan, a design that we put together to work with PSI. So, we're pretty much the little race car tracks, we're going to take those down, those are our main engines. We have not had any, uh, percolator system, our detention house and the aeration basin is what is giving us all of our problems with EPA, with TCU, our ammonia, we are the, everything, we are not able to treat the water due to these aeration basin problems. Plus, with how much it's due us, that we're, that entering the plant has really deteriorated, our concrete, our electrical, anything. So, we have put together a comprehensive plan to give us a new aeration system, which then will help us be able to treat that water, it's going to provide absolutely better reuse water for us to sell down a lot, uh, to Pioneer and afterwards, because I've had contracts of in three years. And then we will, we will still use some of the, the stuff that is already there, clarifiers, our RASPOM, some of the things will stay there, and so we will, we are putting together kind of another master plan for a facility, which is what we're doing five, twelve weeks, replacing it, to where in twenty years, we're hopefully to the point where we have a pretty good top of the line plant. Whereas what we're rolling, what we're doing right now with the seventy million is going to give us loans. Uh, those loans are going to keep us there, where we can pass all of our TCU, and it's still where, in twenty years, that technology is still really good top of the line, and then we'll be able to go and replace all of the small little stuff that we have from there, and then pass it to them. So, we, we will, it is not a full good plan with seventy million, you're looking at two hundred for a common plant, but a very good, uh, wastewater plant, and with this, I've spoken with some more than finance, we have that seventy million in cash, so we can pay for this without going to CIO, without, for the tax care, without budgeting. It will, after the term, you know, once we pay it out, kind of deflate our Pioneer funds, but I think that's the best option for us to move forward, not tax burden these, uh, our systems, and make sure that we can pay for this upfront, and not have to worry. Uh, and that's just the future impact. Other than that, uh, trying to make it a little easier, uh, I don't really know, but any questions, any concern?
There's an issue in there to add, move in the prior, or whatever.
Uh, sixteen, no, you go to the prior. Uh, the H two S is just built up, right? So, it, it is in your wastewater, and then as the moves of the project accumulate, you know, in some areas, you have slow moving. Uh, we, everything in our system is drafted in for sewer, so we do not wait. We have some less stations that kind of get into our system, and elevation is incorrect. Uh, but that H two S is built up along five hundred and seventy mile sewer line, built up, built up, built up, built up. Now, circulation happens, it's kind of amazing, but it still takes it, it'll continue to fly. We only have one end, headworks where it all comes into the point. We're, we, this, our control study just got, we're seeing upwards of two thousand feet, that would do you. If you got to do that.
So, on all things, I have figured out ways to get sulfur out of that. So, is there something that we could take a look at, and then we can take that sulfur out, if we could resell that sulfur, if it might, might?
There's certain things that we can do, uh, at the end of the over control study, they're going to bring to me kind of, uh, options for us to do. There's things that we could maybe incorporate in our circulation system, you know, drop any certain chemicals that will help it, that will break up the sulfur, there's also scrubbers, upper gear scrubbers that will take that sulfur out, certainly put that in place over our system, it's just fun. My first thought is to make sure that we're moving such a, I've got to make sure that we kill that, so we kill that headwork. But I do need to kind of figure out, and with the larger plant, circulation system is also going to help in that, figuring out where our most influence is, that's where the H four, H two S hopefully coming from. We have an election, uh, H two S meter that we put out in the study, so we do know where we're getting it from, we just got to make sure how do we not let it hit the new seventy million at the point, and then how do we go back to it? Negated on part of our system.
I mean, I'm, the companies I'm talking about, they're this on the large one.
Yeah.
Even oxy isn't on this, and I know oxy can give you that, you know, that something wants to show you how everybody, and it's perfect. So, it helps, build up those, and so, and it would be something we could also, we would never have been able to. Any other questions? I'll get your question answered.
Um, so, I guess, well, it's made you a good partner, I'm going to put it way, just argue that's not an only one.
Right, so what we have in the account right now is sixteen minutes?
Yes.
And we think it'll generate eleven million?
Eighteen.
Minimum, three years? So, let the council decide where to spend that off, that, that's your decision. But our recommendation is, it depends on the dairy plan, get it paid for, and make that happen. But that's just our recommendation, you can spend it anywhere you want.
No, no, I'm just, and it keeps, you can throw them around a lot.
Yeah, there's sixteen, and then I've got an account that's got time, and they give me to use it, and I need it for projects, I've driven a project, but I'm keeping that, and then it's eleven, minimum, take your pace. It's like eleven million more, fifty-one thousand, that's a change. And so, if they take more than the four point two million down with it, then there is a challenge.
Contract renewal, okay, next, three years, so we're.
Yes, we, we, we've looked into, people, other people have accepted us to try and already purchase some of the three. But I believe it's.
I appreciate it, sir, absolutely, thank you, guys.
Come see us, man.
Yes, sir.
He's waiting.
She has all her ways to take.
But I think we can.
I'm ready.
You deserve it, right? You better own it, don't they?
We'd like to do a mayor's campaign.
I was looking up, uh, the twenty seven, uh, remember, I presented to you all, council, uh, returns issued, we have software for the quarter. Uh, we do a good overview, uh, if that's right. This purpose twenty-seven, uh, side loads, uh, that's how much we need, no need for operations for the price of this. Uh, as of Wednesday morning, we had fifteen operational components. As of Friday morning, we have four came out of the shop, we have four nineteen, uh, so that, that should be cool. Uh, and so, we're expecting, uh, two more, one in, uh, January, one in February, two years coming in. And then from there, from there on, the other, you need to be coming in. So, by both twenty-two trucks, in the, in the year, big truck.
Those numbers are in the, the back of the, to provide. How many trucks, realistically, how many trucks do you need? I, I know you need twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, I, I, we can deal with twenty-one. Twenty-one, twice the week, twice the week, sorry. If nothing, you know, happens, I did have one truck resign last week, or five days ago, or four. Uh, so that's going to be another, uh, challenging, you know, part, higher. We could ask against a lot of them, but we need to.
Let me ask you.
Yes, sir.
You got twenty-seven, and you say you got fifteen this operation.
Well, and then you say you got four of them spare. Well, it includes nineteen now, sir, uh, Friday, when one came out.
Four spare rooms, man.
Yeah, there's a spare room out there, because, now, if you look at the picture, uh, it does explain what a truck provides for service. On the side orders, uh, it's one of those things that I highly recommend for the owners, we need to consider the feature, dark painting out, uh, just to consider that. From your base in West Texas, maybe on real, but there's still provided the service, but there's only painting out, ain't going to do a lot of the curbside. And then the more efficient wells, the service are.
Do you have a future roll out on rollouts?
Yes.
You have a plan for that, when you start implementing it?
Yes, sir, I, I think I'm working on some plans on subdivisions, you know, uh, right now focusing on mission. And rapid saving, I mean, I will rapid, uh, edge in, you know, the rest of the long there, uh, and of course, these other things, so.
Apparently, the other trucks you thought you could get about less?
Yes, sir, I mean, I, we go to a truck shop, and they're available to buy or lease. This type of truck side orders, they, they don't make it to, to rent out or, you order, or, you know, work for the need. Uh, and I go there with it. I mean, even the ones that are being bought on auction, those people that buy them, they just take the handoff and you can just.
Farmer manager. So, again, the reality is that we, the industry, cities are all moving away from alleys, and the alley pickups, and moving to the rollouts. So, yeah, we're implementing that as a go through, but at the time, we may need to speak that up, and that, that will come with your support, because people love their alleys, they love their alleys. Absolutely. I do, I have, I mean, technically, you don't have a choice, uh, you're telling me, completely, not a choice financially and logically.
You get parts.
Like I said, about West Texas area, I don't know, or Texas, I mean, I have a roll, more to PC, that's really the type of truck.
This is something that, which Michael was here, this is something you need to educate the public on, that we're all going to be done there, it's just a matter of time, not just charging the public information, explaining why it's the best, why it's Mercedes money, there's better than what, plus we need a guarantee, trust me, pick up. People like me who are grown, people aren't grown all the time anyway, don't worry about me, we're going to have to do it. I mean, that makes sense.
Yes.
More efficient, it's more efficient.
One thing is, we can do more of the bulk pickups, we can skip that allowance, skip the bulk pickup, not deals, instead of, you know, maybe one month, instead of, you want to say three months, not doing it. The people will be, they're going to have people that's at the point, not.
And we have those state of the law containers for this year on the, uh, for the document.
And so, I'll also tell you that, um, in other cities that have the rollout containers that are certified private, it is the ninety gallon, and everyone providing once a week services, and of course, we're providing block rollouts.
It will help for us.
We'll be able to continue to do.
I'm just, I'm curious, if you say requires our support, I feel like we are, and I, I don't know what to mean, am I going to wrap my head around it, but to me, it almost feels like we're trying to shoot more than these old trucks in. There's some barrier to, let's roll out the new carts, why aren't we doing that fast? Why aren't we, we, we can get them, we can get the carts, we can get the trucks, we can get the carts. Okay, why aren't we doing it?
That's what we're just, five.
I'm talking to the governor, he's going to love alleys, I don't know. But so, we need to develop, and it's a time frame to make that happen, and push it out there. Right, in five years, when these trucks go down, or see their line, let the plant transition, all that, and that's where your support will. I was trying to think, we need to start with public information, explaining, everyone, it's, it's, it's more efficient, it's cheaper, and fortunately, we have to go through to do it, they're not making these trucks, I mean, if they did, six, twelve, less than a year, truck can, I think, work. That's crazy, we're always going to be, we're never going to have enough, and so, I don't know, there's an alternative, but to explain to people, just go back together, don't matter, it's pure logic.
I just don't want to see you throwing good money after that, and ordering all these side loader dumpsters.
Well, but they're, they're, order, very order, it's not very.
We need to have a plan, I suppose.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I, I just, I don't understand the, the divisioning returns on this, if we've got, if we're already going to throw our cart thing, why are we worrying twenty-seven, three side loader trucks?
It hasn't, it hasn't happened to us yet, all of the stores.
Right, and, and, and that's what I'd like to.
I don't know that, yes, certainly, I don't know that in that favorable response to the past. And so, I need to know, for you, you guys want to hear everything, but that's what I'm trying to do, and I ask all staff to. What are, what are?
I laid up, rolled up three years ago, we got fried.
You don't answer this question, how much are the costs, you can top big time order and delivery on automated side loader versus the, uh, side loader, grill loader, roller.
Well, the side loader, the first order we overbacked on to twenty twenty-three, we did not get one. So, the automatic side loader, it would be one six months.
Two years versus six months.
That's where the natural side loader at twenty twenty-three, that's where it's at.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you're still, you're still going to have some, unless you're going to turn over all of your company business to somebody, you can turn over all of their shoulders to somebody, that's a, a big key on our way.
So, we have to, we can convert by side loads to front load, so the thing that we're intended, they make up front.
We're still going to have some commercial, but, but we've allowed private commercial now.
But I think that if you're going to be selling some, we should, nobody makes these people.
I need to talk to them.
Everybody's going to be serious, so.
Oh, that's real serious, you're going to do that right now. Okay, we need to use our commercial applications. We should, I guess what we need is a master plan, that, that we're, how we're going to rope, how we're going to slowly.
Yeah, we do the phases, yes.
Phase out one, and phase out the other.
To this, to this point, I have heard of the other solutions, other than, well, you take two years.
Well, technically, your stuff, we, we failed to order for two years.
Right, 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 I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, there is another solution, you roll out cars. You have the, hiring room, people are going to do it, you know, there, there are, which are visited, people like my mother, and I show up.
I don't like it, I'm telling you, I don't like it, I like it right now.
Yeah, it's ridiculous.
I care if you give me credit. My products, my products, and my, my business, my, 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 these people, I think they want to play everybody.
That's what we can, that is, that's funny.
Well, that is, some of them are already, we have a few, hopefully, they will.
When you look at, when you look at even in, okay, so I was in Austin, and we were talking about some, and my friend said, oh, well, what's Austin? Is in January, we're going on the main ball pickup, so if I've got a couch to pick up, they act all city, they come, they can schedule.
Yeah, because we have those, that will buy.
Col, Col, Texas, yeah.
We don't need a room.
Col, Texas.
I mean, it's half a ball pickup, it's half a residence.
That's, that's one day.
Yes.
Is, we can make out all that stuff, so this is, I mean, this is the point of your education campaign, uh, look, you can give out the gosh, but here all, you're going to get the return, and we can do that, the parts, you know, bulk up, pick up. I mean, we do it now, uh, like, with, with the, that don't have.
Does take the tank, does the tank? Yeah, we're gonna have to cut that. That's everybody.
Yes.
That's not, that's people, that's everybody.
But that's the reality, the reality is this environment. Probably not gonna happen because everything's costing more than we're thinking. In a year, people were having to pay more for everything, groceries and everything, so it makes sense if it's not accounted for.
No, we're not. We've got, have many complaints.
Right, so that, that's, that's the main thing. Because you're gonna need the revenue going, I'm gonna ask you to fund these vacancies. So that's seven million. We look back and we think, we're pretty confident that we'll get another billion dollars in return for that. But, okay, so that's eight million. Um, so there, the next page is just an updated figure with the seven, seven million in revenue in there. And now that's in the general fund. But we also have the water sewer funds, solid waste funds, and the other funds.
Unfortunately, there are no revenues coming out of any of the sub general fund and water sewer, but there are all these.
Those are, those are rate driven. And so, you know, if you wanna charge the rate for citizens, they can afford, but also pay your expenses. So any raises that we, that we ask you guys to give, um, just, you see, on the three percent of the general fund ratings, costs about three million dollars. So where does that money come from? It's gotta come from the work, or tax returns, or revenue returns, at first, but back to this. So I'm not, the, the eight million dollars isn't quite enough to get off the table, in fact. Okay, but if I asked you today, I will tell you, if I asked you today, or I'll tell you also. So far, we've come to you asking for a hundred and five of two hundred and seventy-five vacancies to be returned, or be returned appropriately. So that leaves a hundred and seven that are currently unfunded. So those a hundred and seventy is why I'm asking you guys to do that. I believe that a hundred and seventy are absolutely gone. I can't get it, and I promise I can look at them, but they were just cut, and, um, because some of them had never been built in four years.
I can't tell you, Catherine, I mean, you took a good look at the vacancies over the last two, four years. Historically, we typically hire out about eighty-one percent of our positions. If you look at what we've already asked you to appropriate year-to-date, we've appropriated eighty-one percent of two hundred and seventy-five vacancies.
I'd like to hear what you're saying, Paul, as we're talking to you, Chris. I heard you originally questioned your budget, wanting to increase on the budget. The truth is, this year, it's not, one of my unsealed vacancies is recruiter position. Well, that's recruiters, can recruit, so you can back this deal, recruit more, that, that kind of, sometimes it's hard, you know.
Yeah, Chris, I hear what you're saying. And they were fluid too, and they're not gonna fill those positions, they're not, haven't been filled before. And that's another point I wanted to say. Um, we have a hundred and seventy to fill. And I'm gonna ask you to allow me to tell the notes all up. Are we gonna fill them all? Probably not, but that means the expense is not gonna be there forever. But I wanna give the department the opportunity to pump the bill so we can provide the service, and that's, that's all you heard today from the department, if they are short.
We had a question just on revenue. How thick your budget is last year for income from over rushing, correct?
Correct.
Do we have yet? Is it coming in yet? How much is it? We don't, we don't have any of the mineral lax money coming in yet?
Got you, what we have, because they haven't filled well, okay? So, but what we did have coming in are some large ones.
Yeah, I believe about five hundred thousand, what we received from them.
That was awesome.
Yes, so like.
They're guaranteed to start drilling.
They are.
Whenever we were budgeting, they hadn't started any of the buses yet, so we didn't have one.
I hear you, I just wondered if, I hope they're not working on it.
They have not, yeah.
I just wondered if that, did this affect that coming in?
Yes, we're very excited.
Yeah, you know, if they're running here or not.
Um, that I don't think they have yet. I think they are.
Okay, that actually, I hope that's something, I care. Yeah, well, I think this is three, um, just maybe, you know, what was it, I think, if we get twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five, on the, on the.
We get twenty-five percent.
Somebody that knows better.
Yeah, twenty-five percent.
We get twenty-five percent of the twenty-dollar roll. So that's over there. Well, that will help.
And then there'll be a lot of money.
A cap.
Oh, yeah, a lot of money, that's, I was wondering, it's gonna happen, that's a hope.
So to fill all those vacancies, all the two seventy-five, in the general fund, that cost is eleven million dollars. Less more than eight million, but I probably get that, and it's bad. So where do we get the rest? I'm suggesting that we, if the department wants to make a vacancy, fill a hundred and fifty. There's a cost that they can assume of that.
Fifty percent of the three emissions, of the, of the cost of that, or, and so.
So in the general fund, you have two point six million dollars. And the water sewer funds, a hundred and seventy-nine, and solid waste, a hundred and forty-three, and just, we go through the chart, I don't know. So, but I'm asking them to have some, um, I've also looked at how our budgets run over the last, uh, two or three years. I'm hoping that those are working, but we've had huge jump. Um, from, we first filled to this one.
From twenty-three to twenty-four, and currently operating ten years, we had a jump of three point four million. From twenty-four to twenty-five, we had a jump of nine point five.
So, I think that's, I think, I think that was a result of, and again, I, I, I do not wanna criticize past councils or passing any of that. I'll just say, I think that is a result of the related, starting zero, hasn't started with the base, and then allowing the department. We sit down a base vacancy here, and then the department went by all the time, is they asked for something in their life, whether it was one time or ongoing. One time is a piece of equipment, ongoing, okay? Four hundred on point nine nine. So, and then we go through the process, looking at revenues and expenses for the upcoming year, and we say, Catherine, I have three million to spend. I make recognition as your manager, that you want to go supplement what you should do, and then once that happens, you look at it and say, oh, if you want to do business in this for that period of time. It's your budget, okay? That's why I always do it. I don't know how I'm having your base level, but looking at that, well, it appears that we, we, I'm not sure it's all for the base, but somehow they grew that nine million dollars. And, and cut vacancies. So to the, to the eleven million, how much is this, how much is this inflation? Because everything, twenty-eight percent. Yeah, two years. Forty percent, look how much growth it went. Are we taking inflation into, into this consideration? No, I'm not. Okay. So everything's on the cost, everything, we haven't taken that into consideration, come on, you're welcome, I thought you told, that I, you got, that's a pretty much a jump, top of my head. Pretty much, and that pretty much holds inflation, that's possible, but I'm still gonna ask them. Well, that's not what I'm saying, but that's what everybody else is saying, it's a whole different company, we'll be operating, it's possible.
So what you thinking here?
Um, things will, yeah. We'll be different.
Those might move on to the next one.
And that's a world, that's a world, yes, that's a world, you know.
Pretty, pretty sure.
So, so do they, help people fill every position, right? And all the, any job, I'm taking my job there. And then to, to cut back on it. That's what I'm asking.
That's, I mean, I think that's a good thing, but everyone has said, do you think they need, they need more people, and they have them up, and that's another, that's probably another day, but we gotta solve that problem for the next question.
So we did.
I actually can't film how many they needed today, I don't think it was a hundred and seventy, it was about a hundred, wasn't it about a hundred?
Well, here's, here's back to chicken, a hundred, and then just, um, I still didn't get it. Oh, is, is this conversation before we get to gathering raises and getting better incentives for hiring people, and, and so.
You'll know down below there, I've got Galloway, and I've got Blue Cross Blue Shield. Because it's possible for the business, I think, it's possible, but, but definitely, I think the transition, Blue Cross Blue Shield. Uh, the expenses that they showed us in the general fund, I see it on my hand, one point four million dollars more, and that includes the general fund. Okay? Um, is that a real number, or not? I don't know. Because where the boss is hiding the pass, if there's a number of costs, there's a challenge, or, um, I don't even know if I.
Yeah, just, just so everybody knows, so, what, you guys are, my stomach, correct? Um, we don't pay, we don't pay premiums, okay, so it's not solid, all we do is pay the cost, cost of the claim. One of the problems we ran into in doing this is that, we're paying our own claims, and that's part of our own process. Stop loss carriers, like Berkshire, Accolade, or Etna, whoever else, no problem. We didn't get the stop loss bids back, because of the panel. The tendency there is, is when you have people paying claims for the fit for the partner, tend to get non-viables to catch. However, you come to me, Mr. Hay, and you say, you know, this isn't covered in our plan, I would be taking that, and that is not, that's my honest opinion. I do, don't tell anybody, you should do it. So the confidence that the underwriters have, the church companies, don't take your claims numbers as bad, okay? It's a guess, it's by default, it's a target. The difference is, Blue Cross has got network, for instance, and we'll take a break, it's a center. Uh, where he's living now, he doesn't enjoy, if he goes to the doctor, hospital, if he's, if he's got cancer, the bill runs five hundred thousand dollars. He's not, we're not getting that discounted claim, we're getting Medicare plus one twenty, we bring some, which, if we're able to negotiate that. So we're happy to go, if we go down to Indiana, we, we didn't have to go negotiate, we can negotiate a single-page agreement. It is fine paid, it's not a discount, if they do, and a lot of times they do. So consequently, we're paying more for our claims servicing, should be paid. So the way you offset that, you go hire Blue Cross, rent their network, which costs you some money. But the discounts they provide, they're a deep sum of business. You sell a claim that costs a hundred dollars with no contract, that costs forty, the cost of volume, which they use. So we, go ahead.
Our case is, we have no last bill, because we have been processing our claims, um, and so, and so, um, they didn't even look at us, they can't trust, right? The, the numbers that we provide is, um, confident and obviously share, and so, we really just had to report, we didn't, we're sure it would have been great. Um, but because our plan hasn't been audited consistently, what it's supposed to do every year, um, so there are a lot of new ones to do. So we know that maybe upfront, initially, we may cost us a little more, but once we level it out, and we're able to clean up everything, we'll see the savings.
I don't remember what brochure you had by either, that's the only quote I've got back, as far as it's material, have you ever seen one?
This family wants to know we are on our own, it's about three, three, fifteen percent.
So we didn't get any, so with Blue Cross bank claim, third discount, and we'll be able to watch this month, and only a guess, every month, Galloway's gonna give us a quarter. You know, here's, here's your maximum claims for the month, here's your expected claims for the month, here's that, so you can actually manage, that's the whole idea. And so, we should come in with those discounts, because when they did say what Richard was pointing out, but I really believe we're gonna make that up, or be part of that, but.
We already know that we'll give a half million.
Yeah, we already have, we already got concessions from insurance, we're happy, but we picked up all the two hundred thousand, so we'll do it.
But I, we're always trying to show you the whole picture, okay? So that's the number I saw, that's actually one time.
Okay.
Um, we'll get half a million credits, but that's still a long one, so, um, I, I, I didn't want you to see that, I understand that they're not here all night, I hope it's not real.
But we will know everything, we will, we will know it every month, I, actually, we're gonna, every, we're gonna, every check.
Every month.
Every month, yeah, every month. Um, end of the month, it's all electronic, it's all, you know, we'll be able to take, how many, how many large claims you got pending, what they are, what, what it, the cost of the cost. So we'll, we'll be able to handle it.
The other unknown is Galloway's, right? And so the number down there, bottom, one point one three million, that is, if you're adjusting at fifty percent of market. So when we do these surveys, you guys tell us, where do we, where, where do you want to be in the market as far as that? Fifty percent time, fifty percent time, seventy-five, three ones at the top. What I've heard is you just gave fifty percent. That's what I've heard, if you guys can tell us that, to put a number in here, so you see the cost for six months, if we do an eight-year adjustment, fifty percent mark, it'll cost us a one point one three five.
And we'll be going over that in more detail at one session.
Yeah, we've got to cut through all of that, what I'm hearing you say is, correct from wrong, segment the flight, segment the flight based on the number right in front of you.
If we, if we fund, if we fund out, we will, we will show a deficit based on these calculations, or based on the fact that we won't fill.
Right, that's what Chris said, I hear what you're saying, but we play, do a hundred and seventy, because you're probably not gonna fill a hundred and seventy.
Right.
You're probably still, whatever. So, so we'll actually get that.
We're already, we keep track earlier of the vacancies, she hired, she hired a hundred and sixteen.
And there were a few I missed, it was a hundred and sixteen.
So that's what I, so I'm saying one seventy, and, if you wanna authorize, if you wanna authorize a dollar now, so that, that, we track that, that's easy to do. We go to total cost of eleven million dollars, if you could tell us that, and I will come back to you, but the way we set it up for the next meeting, for you guys to consider, with budgeting, going from fifty million to seventy million, fifty seventy, and then another million dollars, which is a lot of money. So that's, allow us to go, open this thing.
Can you approve that?
Yeah, we're on, yeah, I'm conscious of that.
I like it.
I know we're here for us to talk on ourselves, and we're not voting on these things, so let's talk.
I don't know what time it's started, I'm just trying to cite my, if, I'm looking at a hundred and sixteen, I'll, I'll take a hundred and sixteen job, and I'll do a part of it, so.
Well, a hundred and seventy is part of that base, so.
We'll be, yes.
Guys, in sixteen years, I've never had to lay anybody off. Because we always have to provide services. And even in the downtime, I have to raise for boys, even if it was just one time. Everyone. That's the pitch, and also the pitch is always paid. They got time off. That's what we have, Jim, that's what we have clinic with the boys. Boys love it. And that's the story. You guys will bring it to you for action.
Although we've done that with the family, it's probably, I apologize. The benefit that we have right now, because we're the place, it's competitive, everybody owns. We had those numbers running. Make sure, I tell you, it's rich. What's all the difference from the plan? Is the medical center gives to the bottom of service.
But we can't be doing more than that. Even on the first side, what's gonna, what's a hundred seventy gonna add? The hundred seventy is a busy number. All that is, they're out there. So take a look at it. You don't have to jot this all here.
And there's one additional point to make sure that we're not going to call, which is a real number for us. Because we will continue to process planning on the current quarter. And we've been locked out for a little while with what happened with the breach. And so we're gonna have a lot of time to breathe out of this process. That's a real number for us. And there's probably about ten platforms that we work on. And it costs us about a million dollars a year. So we need to work into it, happen to it before we start shutting down.
Well, that's already factoring into your operating.
Thank you very much.
Would it be helpful when we have this conversation to add another for a hundred and sixteen?
Yeah.
So the only thing to that is we would have to know exactly what the department's want to hire. So we probably could.
I'm sorry.
It all depends on the staff. So, yeah. We can meet with the departments if you'd like and try to get that together.
Don't waste your time.
Oh, I think we won't hire all, I mean, we won't fill all the vacancies, so I think that way.
We'll hit that space number, we'll fill all the vacancies.
The loop of the plug in the three is back. At that time, I don't want to. We're at where we're at by now, maybe we can all hope this. So, yeah, I gotta say, I hope so.
No, it's gotta hear, no, we gotta hear, it's not, it's not, you have to say it up there. You know, you're a real number. This year, we'll get, we'll get through this year.
We'll get out of, that's what we're hoping.
But please, I guarantee he can't power enough. Four people, they're talking about, but he will get it, they.
This will be a force of will, because we're also asking for breaks and savings. So what's it worth?
Thank y'all, everybody. Let's move on real quick, things. Here's, in the worst of questions, really want everyone to kind of know what the community. Whatever. We've been working hard on it, Richard, myself, and Steve, and want y'all to kind of hear, know what we know. Okay, you want to hit the highlights? Sure.
So obviously, the mayor's new coming situation, the mindew coming situation. We're looking at the pro forma and everything that's gone down. The business is, we now have the land. Y'all are agreeing to take the land, which also that's the great business. Our concern coming in is, how real is that pro forma? And, and, I don't know if we put that in here for you, but we will certainly put it in there. The pro forma works at, the project is ninety million dollars plus. And so, and we're going to allow them an outside interview, which you did, since you're. Then we're talking, it's complicated, we're set up, I'll tell you that. But bottom line, nine million dollars. What's the debt that's coming out, and how do you pay for it? That's where the pro forma comes in, the business plan. The business plan calls to start with two point two million, total motorbacks. That goes up to almost four point nine million in debt. It also says that this facility will make money. So, starting at one point seventy seven, we have a one point seven in that road. So that goes to pay the debt. And then there's naming rights and three days. That, that goes over your time in the actuance. Hold that in your period. So, we're comfortable with a couple of, a couple of motorbacks, because they're showing this doesn't perform so well that, that it's gonna generate that much more hot hats. I, I think we're pretty healthy in hot hats. Maybe a little more, you know, for a, maybe. The other side that we're really concerned about, we all want a beautiful facility, so it will really generate one point seven billion. And angle revenue from operations, that's the question. And if it does, it doesn't, and you guys wanna move forward, you have to be willing to accept that risk. It says public-private partnerships, but the only person, the only entity on the line is the city. There's no private partnership. So if it fails, that turns out of our hands, though. It's one way or the other. So, we're trying to give a better feel on how real is that, that pro forma? And we've talked with Mr. Buchry, and he is going to bring different partners to generate. He knows that enough, how real it is. And we're probably comfortable with that. So we're, the community's meeting with him on, that's the duty, that's the duty. Just to be introduced to this, the new, against the operator, this would be the operator, operator, that would. So we really want to know, it's gonna generate one, it's gonna pay for itself. So, you've got hot months, you've got the profits from operations, and you've got the naming rights. I think the community is, because we really need to step up and help with the naming rights and some other conditions. I think that's great, but we just need a better feel. And maybe this group comes back and says, well, come in, Ben. If you weren't from city, with a seven hundred thousand dollar loss that's made up from another source. I mean, those are the capitals. And I'm only going to bring this up as an example, but you should, we funded the dock course and lost four hundred thousand dollars in damage. I, I, I'm only going to make comparisons to that, that's the second, I mean, that's what we're looking at. I want you guys to know, we kept that off, we kept that off, we kept that four hundred thousand dollar loss. And that's exactly what I'm saying, is you need to be aware of what that loss means.
Two million.
Go into the deal, it's a quality of life issue, and it's a wonderful project, nobody's saying that, but go into it with your eyes open. And on the dock course, operationally, you may be making money, but guys, if you, if you count the dollars that you spend on capital, work out there is not paying that off. That's the only thing I was saying, is if you kept one, why would you even? Yeah, and that's.
Plus, we know our numbers are right, that's our book. We still know they're right.
And, and that's, that's, I'm, I'm okay with that. Get those sweeps here to take that. I'm, I think if this one company is gonna take off, it's there. Not that we haven't been living up, talking about college-wise, we do that whole fields, whole baseball fields, city fair, that you can hold a regional championship. At junior colleges or whatever it is. I hope they'll, hope they'll back off of that sweep.
We're looking, we're looking at several, several different options. Number one, we.
I'd be on that, I mean, Austin's has fields far into the high level, five rated site. And Greek City Mayor decided to do the rest of it. The rest of it, we're unsure what happened. I'm not sure what happened, but things change. And this, so here, I'm still opposed, it's good out in Philly, I think. We, we've got it besides, a bond council, and our national advisor, who will be here next week. We have eighty million dollars sitting in the county's. One of the things that I brought forward, show for you, if y'all remember, that I wanted to blow to revenue laws. We, we can't believe we didn't have. So we grow our, and taxes, say, if you didn't, the local council said, good, and I had a conversation, we had an occupation. And we can, we have that for infrastructure. So, what we, we just tried, we traded off, is my fault. We can always use, if we don't like this, appointed, don't like the security, the findings. And we're gonna have to be responsible for it. Let's have eighty million. Build a sports capital asset. Float delivery bonds, for roads, streets, that kind of infrastructure, which we can, we could flat that up. On top of that, nobody's dead, working on it now, on some of it. We could do, we could actually add a venue tax to hotel rooms at two percent.
Right, and we're working on that, and, and so right now, it's a seven percent. Taxes, of course, pay wise, it's a six percent, and I believe that's accounted to two percent without, for, can you lie? Okay, but we're, we're gonna be capped at seventeen percent, so we're gonna, we're gonna do that right now.
But thirty dollars after you're raised, because that does cost our taxpayer to be raised, it didn't cover that down. And so when you go to Tucson, Aines, Palm Springs, they don't play golf, and one of their golf courses, or you spend one of their hotels, and two percent.
I'd love, I'd love to spend overseas money, but I'll just make sure that we can spend on four thirty five.
Well, but that's, that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying we use the eighty, we use the eighty million. We use, we use this, that way. Over in San Jose.
Yeah, I, I think, I just, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, we, we had a conversation, we, we had a conversation.
Yeah, there's a conversation of, 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 of.
And the reason this is important, and that, we stepped out of that. Through our meetings, we learned, or maybe it was clarified, that cities, because of our lack of bond rating. We're ownerships, also, we pay our rate. And so the rate are not necessarily attractive. So it may not be, what financially you can do, it could cost you a lot of money to do it. So that may not be the best way to fund, it's how it's all, it's all combined, uh, we got a story. But we just want to make, we just want to make sure, if everybody wants to do it, let that clear, they're waiting, city, come down, me at least, there's a hundred percent faith in those most of it. You just gotta make sure we can, make sure we all know what we're bringing, to notice the cost of this.
If we don't, we're fine, at least we make sure we.
They've lost all credibility. They have lost hope. Some of you are getting shoulders for our phone calls.
We missed a lot of numbers, especially, we had a three phone call to run the division. That concerns me a little. You know, I mean, there was a big call, there was a lot being logged, and he.
He's true.
Three.
Sixty bits.
Yeah, he, we're still relying on Buchry. He says the first set of pro formas was from last year. And, and, um, we're not gonna make sure, because, um. It's a different, it's a different group. There's a lot of numbers in pro forma, we've been higher. That's also good.
And we pay your everything, I thought y'all were right, but Senator and Senator, you have never done anything like this. This is the first time that Senator, uh, Senator, Senator, in fact, part about the Ugo, the research, and here, they built hospitals, they built, they built all that kind of stuff. Nothing like this.
Not Senator.
Not, not Senator, Senator. So, we already said, you know, Senator, that's why we gotta get it right. I think that's why we need to get this, do it, this, we gotta get this out of the department.
We're, we all want, we want, and maybe it is a quality of life issue, your guys went on to, to such guys that they took a hundred thousand, or whatever it was, four, a hundred thousand. We just want you to know what that number is.
But I guess that's where I stand with current, sales tax, sales tax money, and that's where you use it, with the short call, I guess. And not build projects, or, or, on the sales tax, on the, we're operating the cost.
Why just, then all sales tax?
Well, I'm sure, I know I'm talking about, there's future, there's future costs.
Well.
See, I'm saying.
Yeah, it's, we want to give the voice raises, we want to do all these things. You guys, it's gonna be a tough, tough budget to do everything that we, we identify to need, want to do, we want to, I mean, maybe here we employ, it should be a hot call. Got a lot of other priorities. So, I still don't know if you're telling me to do everything, but we're not, but I'm, I'm just laying out that plan, and now this, this, we just want to make, I just want to make sure you're comfortable with the number, that you're knowledgeable about it. That's it. That's, that's it. And there's a lot of people, uh, who, 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 we're here. Thank you all.
Anyway, so if this, if this, if this all, tomorrow, it's two days long. We're working, we're working hard.
What's one of the good things, is you do recommendations, if you, if you have. I think what, if we, Mr. Porter had already asked me for some questions, I don't think, I don't see a lot of here, that's what I've heard discussed today. So what I would maybe recommend is, we take, say, forty minutes, maybe thirty minutes, and begin, and let's kind of do some immediate priorities. And as I told you over lunch, I would be happy to come back and do a work session with y'all, to do, to figure out, uh, more complications, please. Because I would think in the next, either if you get to the right handle, you're gonna come up with what you really do, the priorities and vision are, welcome. So if ever we could look today and say, the next, uh, six months or a year, because I've heard a lot of the department heads say, I just need to know where I put them. And then we can come back and do some really thoughtful things, it takes like an hour and a half to do that. That's okay with me. That's what we're, by Mr. Bear.
I think that's good, I, I do think because you are starting twenty twenty-five, I might at least touch on seventy days. Before we did that.
That's fine, that's fine.
A little, but really.
Hey, and, and again, if we keep getting, I still would like that offer to come back sooner than later. And then walk out there, the process, where you need to do it.
Yes, I like that idea, I, I'm.
So I do think, I do think seventy-eight is probably important, for either, especially, both of us.
Let's do this, we're gonna need a motion, uh, I'm gonna skip, I might skip seven, eight, nine, and ten. Maybe eleven, do really fast, so we need a motion. To spirit rules, we call it order, have a motion, a motion, second, all the first, I, I can oppose, uh, great. Let's go number seven, actually, number eight, uh, skip that, number eight. And I want to thank, real good together, since the agenda, there's some really good reading, I haven't read some of that, there's some really good reading. And I know Dan Sins is separating that with a muscle procedure, that's within his original notebook, it's really good. Richardson needs some art correction, to T M L website, I haven't read this one, called Thirty Tips to Lead elected mayors. This is, hey, it's not that long a read, but it's thirty things, I think there's thirty great things you ought to, either, like me, never read before, read it. And if you, uh, if you've read the fourth, fifth, or ninth, you've kind of, so it's really good, it's in T M L. I, I did have Richardson's website, you can click on it, it's large, just read, and, and, hey, it's really good stuff. You gotta help us do the best job we can, you know. But, uh, just, sir, one of those lines, I like it. Then you got to, you can, those emails, uh, conferences, or email, that made really the difference to me, to me, years ago. For understanding a lot of what you're talking about. Part of it, procedure, online responsibilities, and, uh, what have you, audit, also personal. So I'll, I'll, I'll keep an eye on it, if you can, we can. We'd be very helpful, if you could say that's what you did, what you tested, and what you did.
Yes, I'm keeping an eye on it, they haven't, they haven't, they haven't seen it, if you are before that, you're.
Thank you, that's excellent advice.
Also, don't we, the city have a book, or a book that says the responsible mayor, and, and.
They did.
That had to work.
That's what I'm.
I've got.
That, this is this is the D M L. That's what I said, the back of our, the back of our, to try here, sorry. I would have, I would have both just, um, I'll have to read. That package, very, very, very last. Very end of it. And it's all good reading. And I, you got, probably know some of you that are sort of, well, we're new guys, it's really good stuff, of course. So, uh, let's, let's hit number eight. If you don't have a chance to read, uh, do, remember, do handouts that Dan sent us through the calendar, that's excellent stuff. It's kind of a roadmap, if you will, for maybe, or something. Dan sent around, it was really good stuff. There's some things that we would know, we don't read this stuff, I mean, you know, the, you know, I don't know if we need to fill a lot of time on it. I don't want to share, but you know, you know, mayor, ultimately, the, the first senate, first, second senate, section fifty-nine A, city charter, y'all sent your, all the, here. I think it, that's, that's the most important thing that I can talk to you, everybody else, we've been, we've been leaning, and P M L, I mean, it's just you, basically, just don't talk. I think we've all done an excellent job, we're all engineers, just make sure, I, one thing I'll say, we don't always have to agree, let's always be, ask about it. Maybe that's, this is, it's okay, I have your opinion, you kind of each other, as we go, so we didn't get upset about it. Any issue we may not agree on, because your job is representing your district, and you think it's best, as long as you're doing that, it's your actual primary responsibility. We just can have common sense, a motion on the table a second, and then discussion on that, and then, you know, look, it's that simple. Anybody have any questions, others? Uh, somebody sent me a question. I think one of, one of the one, I think, uh, everyone sent me some emails, somebody sent me emails, one question was, or one of the recommendations was, if we have a meeting on to the, to set the, the session, work session, then we hopefully talk back to a week later, right, and vote on it. And some of us have, well, some have, and some have a little record, or, I'm not sure, we might need to play in charge of that, but, man, you gotta remind us after a week of sleeping and, and, uh, working and doing everything, and then it's two weeks, it was two weeks. Two weeks, that, oh, two weeks, that's right. Which is the point of why I sometimes, like, we never talk, I don't even remember it. So we, I think, when I say we, as for the cow, needs, uh, I don't remember, you said, you need to reverse it before thirty, for thirty minutes plus, refresh your, re, 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 refresh your, because I want to not remember, I mean, what we're gonna talk about, so I don't have a clue about that, but I feel like that'd be a, a helpful, kind of get our minds focused on the upcoming meeting and sits.
Yeah, if you do that, and if I can, and if you did just, like Ray said, in, in the work session, three minutes early, and open it up for questions, or, or, you can talk to. Do you have any questions about the agenda, which we're on, for a vacation, and ask for an opportunity for us to learn?
Pretty, 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 how y'all used to do that, you could, back here, because I know it kind of grew into being a work, I know Gary managed, who's been in our city, Gary grew into being, only you two, y'all, y'all know.
Sure, y'all used to be, sure, um, you don't have to do everything fast, I'll say that as far as. So, if you, what we could do, we would, and that went away over time, too, so I think there's a good thing there. And, um, if I need to get something in front of you as proof, do other ways to, um, one-on-one meeting, or type of thing, make sure that you know what's going on. So the briefings, we just call it, if you enter, uh, if there's, if we needed to get a department in front of you, that's when they would. If there was items that we didn't see action on, that you needed to know about, that could be on the future, we would put it on that too. Now, value of the work session is, it's a longer time, and it's gonna be three hours, two hours, whatever you want, it's just a different way. Um, and, you don't have to do everything fast. It's our job to know the upcoming things, you're gonna, you, so that you can ask questions about it. Um, and I hate to surprise you, but I, I never like to surprise. Mr. Cleaver, you, you listed some of those, uh, bridges, you remember those?
We remember.
Did you get enough information through that?
I think it worked, worked really well, well, I got, to do them, and I, I just don't know where this work session, where, how to do a work session, I'm gonna get two meetings, I'm gonna.
It, it, it makes for a long day, if you guys, and, and we can continue to do it if you want to do it.
Um, Gilbert, Steve, Greg, y'all there before, we're, we're, we're brand new, us, they're, they're, they're two meetings, so, what works better for y'all, what do y'all think? Y'all are hearing this, y'all already got it, two plus years, give us some advice, or your insight.
I got to hear stuff beforehand, fully, you're got, city council, maybe a week, or two weeks, think about stuff beforehand, hey, is this gonna work, or this, this, you know. So, one thing is, we didn't chop it up into the city council meeting without having another discussion. There's always another discussion, in case you change your mind, or you can add something to say, but, maybe, uh, I like the session. But I like the work session, because it gives everybody a chance to tell your life, uh, to, it's a good chance to tell your guys, when you get to go through everything, saying, if you have questions, and you, all your questions, if you want. Most of the time they have answers, but there's some times when they don't. So, you push that to the next work session. Once you give those questions, that's when it goes from that work session to the, if you, if you push, like, we'll just, we'll use the, say, I mean, we, we, so complex with that. So we bring it up in the work session, we're not gonna push it over in two weeks, because there were some questions that we didn't get answered, we didn't see the management, and so. But came back up in the next session, and got the answers for it, if you need to push it, I know only just that, then yes, now it's time to take it up. So if you just, just have to, we just like slow down, allow them to slow down. If you just go in one session, then in two weeks, well, just allow them to slow down.
I, I like the process, it's tough, but again, this is quite, it needs to three years or three, so I don't have any other example for, uh, rituals, describing. I would adjust whenever it's a pleasure of the council, that's what I'll be pushing, but yeah, I, I like the process. But then again, I also recognize, I'm retired, and I, I, my time, I gave it any time that I had, so, and then we figured you guys are new, and all work for it. So, and that affects your, your.
What age were you?
Well, I, I went to my, you know, I, I was.
Well, I, I went to my, you know, I, I got this job, I thought, this is what I've been doing. I'm not available a few days, but I have to be able to. After that, I'm at home relaxing, forcing, because some councils are stressed. And I get a chance to read what's going on before I go there. Because I will read it. I read it a week before, like, I mean, like, if I read it two days, I'm like, now I'm on my hands. And so, that's what I like. I like it, work session is more. And it's, it's that time, you know?
I just think, I know what you're talking about. That's professional. Don't need to talk to one person out when I have to. You need to find out what they want. Just move into what says what it is. I think we just got probably a lot, long conversation with some of the department leaders that the first couple of weeks go in. Just kept going with one person, kept going, kept... Then we got to find, so thirty minutes, prime date person. I have to work with a person. I just honestly think we would, we would talk to one person.
There's a wrong version.
Yeah, yeah. We just need to show up personally.
Right. So, we definitely have contact with, um, to know the email.
Yes.
And you voice that, certainly, you know, they don't have a long time to stop it. Uh, and so, certainly, you know, when we were connected, I thought we should manage it. It's a, I didn't manage it.
And the lead would, they covered it pretty well, making people some...
Let me ask you something, you know, officials along those lines too. Again, what I remember about how hoping to become a pregnant council person was, we hired city managers from other cities and departments or answerers provision. If I have a question, uh, certain, let's say traffic. I'm not gonna call the traffic, one-on-one or email it, so I don't go to this person and tell them what my concern or issues, because like it sticks with my concern or whatever, and let that person take care of it, rather than me talking to the department.
I, am I wrong? I mean, I did that too. That's what I said. I would bring, send an email, they go over there and try to catch them. Other, their minds are on a hundred things, and then you come stalling in and you, ah, 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 and, you know, they're, you just stop them off guard, they're not ready.
Well, this, this also related to the damn conversation. Because I know a lot of us want to help so much that, and we think ourselves as Cal or Craig or whoever, uh... But unfortunately, now we have titles in front of our name, and sometimes that innocent question might be misconstrued as being like an urgency or demanding something.
Ah, it seems that way.
So, I was asking where we were going as a time, but honestly, I guess everything should go through you, Richard. So, we do our job, right? Try to set the baseline and make sure we don't bother people. We have, we get the information, leave, I hear what he's asking about.
Um... Sure, thank you. For not always step up. No council contact with, with staff, there's no contact. There's just, um... And, and what the direction I give to staff, and they sense, if you do get contacted by a council member, that doesn't go through again, and I'm not forcing you to contact. I'd love for you to do that, but it's not necessary. But if you do make contact with, um, the chairman, and you, you ask for information, I just want the engineering department to let me know what information that they gave. Show me the conversation so that I can make sure, if you're asking it, or if you're asking it, it's good information that maybe I need to share with everyone. Okay? Um... When you have a particular problem with, with a trash, if it's a pressure issue or, uh, broken water lines or any complaint, I'd love for you to send that to me so that I know what's going on, so that I can direct it to the appropriate department and say, check on this for me or report back so that I can get it back or that we can solve it. I just want to assist in that.
So, let's read this over to the number nine as well. Uh... We all have roles, our jobs, desire, and we all set up ingredients to set up. Uh... We each have our budget, we don't tell them half the budget, what the budget's gonna be, what... Um... But it seems like, from what I've read, Richard, it sort of dictates what we all should go through. I'm talking about best practice. You don't say do that. Just go for what you think, here, and so try and be, you know, we're not trying to be that way. If I call up Alex, ask about a larger, I'm not trying to demand something, but I don't even disagree with saying, damn, the mayor called me, now he wants there, and I'm like, oh, nice. He asked me, right? I don't even disagree with it. You know, so I almost say, oh, I'm building the air tonight. Or, or deputy, or, you know, or assistant city manager. So, it's always management, does management, nudge down to, uh, staff.
Because this is how I ask that you go through the city.
City manager.
Email or text or call, um... But at the same time, I don't want, I don't want ever tell a council member, if you're not calm down. That's, that's not what I would ever do. And your citizens do. You can communicate with them, ask for information, but it's best to go through me or whoever's in this chair, future seat whoever's in this chair. That's the way this, uh, council manager on the government will do. You guys have the vision, the correction for the staff. And you have your own need to, the attorneys, the secretary of customs, and the, and the chain. So, the rest of the boys are the city manager responsible for. And if they're not, they're not, I don't know about it. If you have a concern, then you don't know about it. Um, but they're, they're the responsibilities.
But as we stand here through this whole meeting, one thing I really enjoy, tear and nerve vibe. Larry, in fact, I got a newsletter on Friday. Oh, oh, I got it on Friday. And everyone's like, wow! Yeah!
I wonder why we didn't do that.
That, that I'm trying to say, I see that. Every week, president, that week or everything, I thought I didn't know.
So, sorry, that's... Um, I used to do a small Friday meeting and, um, communicate with you on a weekly basis. And the weekly rap is just a form of that. So, Mr. Schuber asked me if I did that out. And I said, yeah, I used to do the small Friday meeting. So, I got with staff. And they're good, they're all ready to meet in turn, um, to share amongst each other. And so, I'm like, that's exactly what I want.
In fact, if we want, we all get asked about people that throw you out. There's two or three questions about certain things, and the honest truth is...
I don't know.
I mean, we're trying to make, you know, make their thing work, and I don't know the specifics. I don't even need to know the specifics, except the jails, or, you know?
I don't know. And now, as you get that weekend and week out, you're gonna see some products. But that's okay. It's just information for you guys. But it's, um, it's something I hadn't restarted with you guys. I just have been, uh...
Crazy, crazy.
Um, but, Mr. Schuber, I appreciate that.
I would say going forward, I'd love to do that from staff and then from you. Like, if certain things are, like, the search for the city managers to say that. You just, you sit next to sort of here, here's what happened in February. If you have occasions, you do certainly. And we're gonna circle that one. Whatever, does that make sense? Maybe it's the short?
Oh, no, you bet that. That's a little bit of that, the weekly rap too. Um, but also, other forms of ways to communicate with you guys. Um, you can go visit each council member with the mayor at least once a month. Sit down, have lunch, breakfast, and comment on things that are concerning you, the district or citywide. And there's an opportunity to talk to you about pages are, are happening here, here you didn't know about. It's just a good way to communicate. Now, let's, let's take your time. And I think it's a good way to see you work.
I think that's what I think, from talking to everyone in council. Everyone should be, we don't want to bother anyone, but want to be in the know, you know? That's our word. So, I, that's okay with y'all, they should do something like that. Breakfast. If you need... Two of them, three of them, four of them.
I can, I can.
Yeah, I'd say, take it back.
But what I can, I can just give you information and resume. I can't go from a meeting with the mayor, Mr. Schuber, to a meeting with Gilbert and say, this is what we talked about. Right, right. What we said.
Same conversation.
It'll all have form that way. But at least it's an opportunity for you guys to share your concern and for me, the mayor to share the thing that we know is going on. Like, like we're... Yeah, I would like to hear, like, if Gilbert's got something going on, and he came to you, and I would like to know what was going on, and if they wind up in the same deal, what solution you gave him. Got it. Okay, so, again, I've got to be careful there.
That would be a walk before, guys. So, so, you, so you sat down with, with Ricky and say, okay, uh, I love X, Y, Z, just making something up. And he walks over to council desk and says, you know, definitely, don't be above X, Y, Z about around now. Next thing you know, he goes to council and admits, well, we're not a walk before. But we can't do that. But we can do though, he can listen. He can say, hey, we're gonna be working on downtown.
Yeah, I can get the information with you.
That's what I'm sure. Yes.
I just can't say... He's a male like this, by the way, and...
Well, and, and one of the things that we talked about is, there were several things today that we got updates on, and this is today, first time I've heard that kind of an update. But, you know, those things could have been sent out. We could have had an update about the cyber incident. Or, hey, we could have had an update about progress on, you know, utilities, for example. And so, that, that's kind of something I was looking for, uh... Without having to go sit in my house and wonder what the hell's going on over ID. You want to get a text telling you, and then it becomes this thing where it's, oh, okay, well, here comes, oh, Craig, you know, you're out there, and you're doing, you know, that, that, like, healthy. That was another point I never wanted to do before, and I have no expectation of urgency.
But I do, Walter, these guys, Greg, and all of us, we came a whole week, we got to meet everybody.
That was the first time we ever seen each other.
Oh, my God! Y'all was walking.
Yes. We had, we had to go through, we didn't see them at the council.
Go on the roof with what?
No, we went to... Uh, we weren't allowed that much. Which is why we're so, felt kind of sore to the, which is why when I was together with Dad, we forgot to be bad. Probably held information, but just not, no way. We're not part of the club.
Yeah. An hour or...
Yeah, we spent an hour.
We, we, yeah, we got through. And that's a bit time. Isn't that guy that tells us what's going on?
They did today.
I mean, you guys are welcome to do that. You want to do it for the boys, for the group, for the plan. But this one, Saint Anthony's was...
That's what I think.
We wanted our check in. We didn't have a check in.
Which is why we're torn to have these conversations today. Yes!
I apologize to y'all, David.
Yeah. We stand, you know, we're, 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 start here, and then no one told us. We're too stupid to read the book until like, I'm...
We're thinking about, um, open meeting in a serious sense of the city, it's stupid, something stupid.
Yeah, we do, we do what we did.
Because this man here, he'd like to hop and watch everything, but all influence protect the mayor.
Which we don't, we don't want to overstep, but, you know, literally, the last week I read a volume. Before that, I was kind of, you listen, you know, we had a lecture that would be very emotional. Maybe, you know, there might things happen, then there's Thanksgiving, then there's Christmas, then you got a job, and it never got money. You know, you feel like we're...
I just, I mean, I have the best. I mean, I have to meet, I have to meet everybody, and we're going, we just do a walk for, with all the...
How about that? All these friends.
Look at them. You know, I don't see it. I don't know.
It's good. I have the, I do go where you're going. And, and, and we got a cool jerk with you this morning.
Okay, so, technically, that's how come we do everybody. Now, I think we do that as, as candidates, because you need as much information about the city.
Oh, right. No, we got no security.
Yeah. And then...
It was a good about that. But, but we're all friends now. All we want to do is, is that we can be without doing anything wrong, unintentionally, which is why we wanted today to come together and help us.
I know.
Help, help us, there's kind of roles in our... And so, that's what this is all about.
We are, because I'm not confident in my work, something you all do today. But we're a struggle, actual, we're a struggle. Um, it was need for me.
So, I told Seth, and I know what you can do as all the time, if you did it every six months or... You did it times where it's in the home, and, you know, then you break this pack. Not inherently on a thing. If you did it every six months, you'd be good, guys.
Something like that. It's just an opportunity that, you know, to be able to talk without being filled up on your own stance. Somehow, sure, maybe, I thought that was very helpful, get to know people better. Because people have been meeting on Tuesday, we just ride into the, you step right into the fire line, I'm speaking.
Okay, let me ask you something, sir. So, they invited us to the mobile. Forty-five old school.
That's fine.
I'm not talking, keep busy. I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
I'm just saying, you know...
I like this guy.
I mean, how many parties is the real guy going to have?
Yeah, right. So, it's okay.
Okay.
Well, you're good.
There's nobody tonight. There'll be a department.
Yeah.
There'll be no business.
Nobody, nobody. All right, I feel so much better. Hope y'all are doing a little bit about eight and a half while we're, you know, I don't say confused, we're just, we feel like we're involved.
It's, it's respected as a...
We're all there.
The strong block in the city. And, and Richard is doing that, even now, he's doing that. Block is finding problems, talking to the department. Those did recover on the Friday night or something. So, it's not like it's... It's going.
As we started to do here, I just want us to have this kind of get together, visit, learn about each other, break bread together, and hear from everybody. Like, like I said, I get, we did words like any day, and I feel like all friends, you know? So, um...
Well, I'm, I hope, I hope that either you or Richard, I mean, seeing that you've been here for ten years, will somehow getting through a thanks. Every individual, I've looked down at names, part of every decision. So, I know those people, I know as citizens, I know as governors. I know these people, or the passion they've got, or what they do, the sponsors that they have. I don't know if we as a council, that take the time to really say thank you. So, definitely out there doing their job, the best they're doing. And I just feel like to have to know, every one of the, uh, and representatives, they know, is this person saying, I acknowledge you and thank you, and thank you for your passion and serving our city, and, uh, just, we appreciate it.
Okay, yeah. I think all of you know how much we appreciate them taking time on Saturday, you know, today with us, to make us all more educated, aware. We, we heard where the problems are. That's our job, we saw. But now at least we got a chance to hear from anyone, and I think it's fantastic.
Good. What do you think?
At least that it works on you, it comes to play out through your... That might be, that might be worth it. But, um, you're a work session so that we know that, hey, this is what we're gonna work on. Everybody knows we're gonna do this, and, uh...
That's why I think, Richard, you came up with that. Hold it in it. That's where we're at, get that. I'm a great attorney. So, does anyone have any questions on eight or nine? I know you, you just did a little, we kind of didn't know what, best I can tell, so I think we're good. Any other questions on our convention procedure, or our roles as council slash mayor, anybody? Any questions or thoughts? If not, I'm really gonna kind of announce, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Laurie and say, look, and help us now, we have time. I know time for them to, let's begin, if you can, for a minute, for an hour. Just going over some of our, at least you can consider to be our... Great for our audience the next, just call the next, we got a budget, let's go last, until say, Denver. This is just this number year versus maybe we'll have another meeting about next year, the next year, the next year. That's a chance.
I have a hobby with this. I promise y'all, everybody asks me when I put up here, it's when we meet here about thirty. And unfortunately, I get you all to check on such your places that y'all can draw it in. So, so, do we want to wrap at three, or do you...
No, I, I, you know, since about three-thirty, I get this less than a hour and one thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's great for your...
Yeah, I don't know if you're hanging, but you're right. Let's take, let's...
I drink a lot of water, so...
Let's take about a seven-minute break. I'll watch the Hennepin here.
You can go to the... Yeah, so what you have in front of you.
Yeah buddy.
I just need access to the traffic control.
Yeah, they're still trying to get that up.
Yeah, you heard right now. Now we're gonna second, I know. I did not have people to get the first one right looked at and now everybody's pretty much like applying to say no. Like the ball. For one, for your reasons, I didn't put a good lead.
I like the time cleaners better.
I know, well I didn't have you. So I want my contract dogs to pick me up and process it today. Okay, so what I want you to do is as Richard mentioned, he did pass out sheets of work, he went over military council members and asked them what their project priorities were. And we are drugging into this, I can just tell you that right now. But I think, I would take a minute by yourself, you just read it yourself and go through and really what's on here, because a lot of what's on here, after I've been here all day long and listened to what you've heard today, I think when we talk about the main priorities, they may not be, I'm sorry, I should come on back to that. The main priorities, they may not be what you thought of when you first talked to Richard. And now that you've heard these, they maybe you need to adjust in your thinking. So I want you to go through this list and think about the things that were said today, and I could talk to you and I took some notes if you need to. Some of the things that were brought up as individual things or the urgency. I want you to identify the seven things that you individually think are most important. And it could be on this list, or it could be something new you weren't aware of.
I know this is all real. It's all hard.
Okay. Seven. Because I don't know how to. You might go through it for the psych five, but you didn't, Richard didn't, I don't think you ever really done it. It's a birthday though, it's.
No, I'll see your coat with this hat.
Right, what do you mean? Coat. They don't share a coat. They do a coat, right out there is a coat.
I'm not talking about.
Coat?
So they didn't get a coat with you.
No, I don't know.
Now, nobody gave you a coat without. I got to give you.
You don't like that you have a coat?
I'm not getting out of here.
Okay, y'all gotta look up the needs when you got your seven, so I don't think you've gotten that. Okay, so when we get this sort of more formal process, you'll see a more formal process. I kind of, when we hit this moment, I was trying to keep my process as fluid back there for, for a short process. Correctors there, and consultants there, some of my processes that you know. Okay, what I want you to do now is I'm gonna be one group of three, two group of two. If you wanna get with somebody different, just move it right out because, so you got a different man. I want you to take both of your lists of seven, and I want you to narrow it down to five. And you're gonna come to consensus, and remember, I am not asking you to be, have unanimity. Because I will tell you that Jay Hunter has been writing over the conservative, he said that you've got two members on board, and they always agree you've got nine members too many. Because you do, you do have, you come to the diversity of opinions. So I want you to come to, you, the two of you or the three of you to come to consensus on your five. Then we're gonna work together to get consensus on five for everyone. We're working, we're working. The guy who's that director. And then there's the time to be, and I want to be part of this. And just to stand in line, five things, the five things that you, that you can take together to make it out. So you don't have to remember it all.
Well, see, we need to see all of them.
So I don't think they're the ones who are important, they're the ones I.
Come back this.
No, no.
I do it.
I said, have me at least a lot of them, and he said, that's many as she knows.
It's three and it's a little hard. That's really, yeah.
Yeah.
I love the city before.
Station.
I guess it's, all these years with the city, you can be on top of this one.
We've done better here. Uh, I'll be taking a bit. Yeah, he gave me those.
Are you there too? So we, it's all just like this. Now, take three percent here.
I can't take the series now.
I said, I said, now, we're just gonna buy that. Can't buy that. We're gonna pass the buyback, almost a thousand, it's thirty.
We've got to take it out. We should do it, like that, yes, so. I love that, I appreciate it. I got to, you know, like.
Yeah. Although you probably see one.
I'll see your concern for this. It's interesting.
He is.
Eight point five. They can be on the law. He wanted to reach you. It's right.
So who could, if there's a chance we could keep here or if.
It's natural, you know, it's not that we love. I remember her first one year, she raised two years, she was a dog, and you know.
I was really played all four things. That was, that's why I'm here. So then right now, I'm just wondering. Lovely to come here, guys, and welcome. We had a little bit of time to spend this week.
Yeah. That's into it. So I'm, you're a lot of the.
You have, you have good deal.
Also, that's what it's. I think that's. I see it's. I'm just. I wonder if it changes. It's just. Shout out.
If.
Well, ours is right there. I'm sure. Is that for me?
See, I don't think you said you were going to say.
Will you go to see people that are. That's good for the winter. Yes. Like, they should. Here's. Well, we think that we need to play the right, and try to place this somewhere in the year. Play on. And so then we play.
And we don't.
I don't discuss. Now, we can, but this would be. Nobody for it. About to watch the location. Out around there, like, this is. How we know about. It's. It's crazy. So we probably like. Well, it's going to count as a certain. This is like, this is under. I don't like. You're out of the car.
I know you know the same point.
What would you want?
That would be part of this.
I'm freezing.
Well, I guess that's where I have my room.
Okay, how are we doing on our seven? We're five. Okay, come on, keep going.
Y'all just not over there standing. That's it, there, hurry.
See if I'm saying something.
Yeah, it's a, it's a. Remember that you all, you all said, yes, I'm all for your foot.
I didn't. I think I. Is it meant.
Same size, you have six.
Oh, I got you.
Well, this is my.
I'm blocking it.
Do we need to do it while we were, to not.
It isn't that clear to. I just worry, I just want to. It's all. Next thing.
I think, I support all three. Recently. I was.
As soon. Okay, see.
We can push. It's just a matter of.
Well, I didn't, I wasn't sure of the stuff.
I give you.
No, I, I didn't just know that. Uh, I. As well as. I don't think it's. I don't.
Which is. I mean, you.
Uh, yeah. But that's what I'm. This is, is this was.
I want something. I don't know, I don't know, because you're basically.
I got a lot of money.
Okay. Well, I want to tell you now, because you're gonna, something here is wrong here, and you tell me what your five are.
Water, sewer, number one.
We're not far where that's at yet.
You know, without water and sewer? You got, you got no tank of water. No justice. No justice.
And that's something I should have mentioned, as we go through, it's like these, if it's something that already needs, like, the derisioner plan. It's already, it's, it's already in the work. Is that, you're already working on that, you already got contracts, you're already doing the work? That's not, that's, that's already, you already made that priority. But something like, audit it, or maybe, so just, just, just.
I understand more about it. Really, really well.
We're gonna split off the numbers.
There you.
Huh? Okay, do you have audit and what else?
You didn't audit it on board.
We haven't, all right, we're not gonna prioritize them yet. One of them, yeah.
You got, okay, it's not, affordable housing. And sports.
Can you go over? You didn't try to speak.
Well, Ed and I wanted to, one of our, the bar race was hired, called the city manager today. Privacy manager. That's what the road leads to both of us. Are we doing, because they refigured that very.
Yeah.
Are you doing this?
Yes. I. What we have, so we're two words, three that's seen.
So you have to say.
He has been. We told that we, and we come with all of them. All of our. All of that. We have a lot to do. As we said, affordable housing, sales. One, and he said, one, that's. Basically, trash problem, that's. That's our name.
Edit, now let's see.
Order number one, you feel like a proper context, like trash problem, that is not fixed, although we've sort of been correct, like, part of that. Few factors, you know, he didn't take it out. Figured out how we're gonna clean that grill side, and Cal does that, it's all sort of turnkey deal, right? My guess, trash, like, in parts. Number three is, makes for a road. Road, you don't need to be bad. Four, you don't need sports on a left, or five, it's hard to see manager because again, you're gonna do it. It's starting today, so we have to do it on this. It's hard. You never find it that. All the way.
So, if you're, now I'm gonna catch out of the. Six, seven are up here, what are your five?
You need to grant somebody to run.
I don't like to enter that. Get your. Get your.
Okay, is it, now, what I heard was probably Cal was carrying this list, and you also know the city, that he's in solid ways tracking, was just cleaning up. Because, is that all together?
It is. I don't think it's all together. It's all together. It's a turnkey deal. It's all part of the overall, this city, you gotta, you gotta love ourselves, you gotta take care of ourselves, that makes all of that. Helps me.
Now your water and sewer, road, the portable housing, hire city manager. I guess my question is, is hiring a city manager an option?
No.
So I mean, it's, it's.
But you have.
It's not easy. But I think it's not presented an option. You're gonna fire one or another. I mean, it's not, it's really not.
Charter makes a.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna do it.
It's not. We're gonna try.
I mean, is it, is it money changing?
We have a lot of people that do not work anymore, people that can't afford houses, that can't afford, maybe hundred or three hundred thousand. But they can afford a hundred, two thousand.
So is that in the main department?
Yes.
Everybody agrees?
You don't have, you don't have apartments?
We all talked about it.
Nah, I mean, not really, because the, the R order goes so many up north, and we can't be hurt, and they've got lots of houses. The official go, but over a hundred thousand, I don't know if it's. Bush wouldn't build behind that, I don't know. But they would be. Ah? No, no, no. The R order, the R order, building. So that's all. No, they don't, they'll be a four, but they'll be about a hundred fifty. At least that's where the people go. We, there are odd roads, and there's subroads, and alternatives that people take, and apply a name strategy, all of that, so that are. The old D roads, that people take, and hardly get, or start. That's sixteen, all other roads, you can hardly get. There's a problem, you gotta run like forty second, so bad, remember that crap, like, there's so many people on it. I always go fifty second down University, so fifty second, kind of very crowded, and it's really a tear. I like road, they may be able, like, in University, it's a third road, and you can start, I don't know if it is, but out West, that. University, she passed over, uh, uh, Wisconsin road, from there out, that road looks like dry, and a few roads, and you got something, it's just.
And I have to say thank you to everyone responsible for making sure they put those pylons up on forty second, there in front of where the people try to turn left into.
You also have traffic.
Yeah, we will, we sure do appreciate it. That would drive the traffic.
Well, that was, that was a special text, but forty second street's on the list of text, but I can't say what is gonna be done, as is. Another, the median is all the way down. Well, they're, they're not gonna do that, I can tell you, they, what's their, what's their plan, to get money, MDO's like, money to allocate, to get an allocation, or get more fat. But, there's a lot of roads to build, and that forty second's on the, right on. So. How fast they have it.
Oh, did roads?
Already early seconds. Yeah, second's gonna go, the, the, you wanna talk about roads, or roads that need to get built, mine and my priority is, is Yukon, the three, three, uh, three D five, of the watchout. Because that road goes through Marchville, and it goes down to one, and then, now goes under one, and then it goes on to the airport. And it needs to be a major thoroughfare. No, that's not a one-year project, you're right. No, no, but then we had the same meeting with Midland County, and I tell you what, that road crosses south, the overpass. And it goes in this crazy way, and that's gonna be a major thoroughfare there, but that's a Midland County road, so it's really not our deal, except, all our people, who are gonna use that road to get there for, because, well, he can easily run. But not that you're in state.
I like that road.
But there's gonna be, like, that overpass. That road's gotta be next, I guess road's. But just so you, just so you know, county, you have to admit, it says over here, there's only four borders around, Midland County, district, uh, Mike Cameron Park, Midland, Jack Fines, and Garrett County, that's all. That's all, and Martin County, that's it. There are many others. There are rigs, trucks. If, I didn't think affordable housing is an issue, I don't know, I hadn't heard that before, but I already started house, I already started grass like two feet. Well, if you're working on a placement, or as a school teacher, as a, say, it's been what, been a sixteen?
That's right, I come in and think. I had two school teachers. I'm sorry, speaking. They make seventy thousand dollars. They're gonna buy their own house, but they ain't a whole four hundred thousand.
So this is, this is a language thing, retired by affordable housing, or retired on work or something?
We're talking about affordable housing, or those who are working, not working. Not for people. We're talking about.
Schoolwork, homeschooling, these schoolteachers, and police, and nurses.
They're what takes the state, the, the very good part of.
Right, that's affordable housing, affordable housing is.
But, that's. Vouchers. That's the merit of housing, they want permanent housing, they don't want temporary.
That is not gonna differ from.
Well, I think Craig, it's probably the better one, is right, like, because, yes, affordable housing, generally you're thinking of trying to get people from homelessness, or near homelessness, or rough sleep, or into something, whether it be vouchers, but, but often that's affordable housing. Versus.
Work for housing, when you're trying, teachers, nurses, you know, school teacher, I didn't have to do that. I think there's more of that going on, I, I'll find out, but I think there's more there going on.
That's, that's my deal, because I have to. I don't disagree.
You should know that for a reason, you should know that our day was. I'm sitting over here for protection.
After you heard your fourth today, you think water and sewer is already, is already.
It's, it's. It's.
It's more similar. But actually, they all were saying...
No, I...
That was my, that was ours.
Yeah, it's more similar.
More similar than number five. That's definitely our... We need that one down this year. In a perfect world, we should somehow start, uh, get show, start construction.
There's a couple things that are up here that I was looking at notes from, from all day. I don't see staffing up here anywhere.
Where you, where you did, when you had an opportunity. Richard, Richard did that deal.
Well, but part of that staffing, if I remember correctly, was, I know you're talking about the scallop or something, but looking at what the, what the compensation. So, I heard that, and then I also heard, I probably, what do you call it, a citywide maintenance plan, for lack of a better term. I heard flooding opening municipal quarter. I heard somebody talking about having to put paper towels on the floor and the windows sealed when it rains because of kicking into the dispatch community system. Or is that something that is, is something you...
I, I would like to put on there, community planning, that's what, that's, you know, something we talked about. There is no comprehensive community master plan. It ties everything where you're not cutting the road after it's paved, put in a pipe. It's, it's looking at our abilities, we heard of the maintenance plan coming up.
But is that, but is that the community master plan? Address immediately, or looking for meetings of maintenance and facilities for the city?
Well, we've heard, we've heard the same thing. When I'm hearing it, uh, y'all need a new, uh, city hall that has ten stories that house every one complex. If the county had already agreed to a thirty fifty million dollar, four dollars to do with COs, it might work discussing. But I think that, we get fired, we did it, but one or two, I think, need to go to Congress and give it a pass and be next in the hall, I think. Although certainly, so I think some work to see in the future, again, if we start now, it's two years before you get a bomb passage turned.
No, 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 the media needs, like, like, we need some...
What I'm saying is, we're supposed to have our own maintenance department here to take care of these buildings. That's what they're supposed to be doing. So, why do we need the price for us, what they're already doing? They're supposed to be, the reason you get, you're supposed to go try to see if you can do a hot patching if it's not. Then it needs to come to city council, uh, if we're...
Running an oiler is in our mix.
The oiler is, is the same thing, that should be done in the, in housing, the city.
Yeah, so there's, we have never heard of that problem. Now, this is first week I've ever heard of that.
This is what I'm, I'm just now hearing about all of this, too.
And what I'm thinking, y'all, I want to, is the council recommends, Mr. Ward, that they ask the, the city maintenance people, the, I believe, the department, to come up with a plan. They don't plan as to what are their priorities and getting them, those things, like, having them fixed. Not to say, you need to get them fixed. You know, most of, but most people don't wanna have a, most people don't... Uh, that they're all, they're gonna respond as an immediate thing, or to say, okay, this is how we have a detailed plan. So, that, then, then, then I go here, but that might be a direction that you wanna give, because I've heard several department insight. I just need to know... What to do, what to do?
Building maintenance, is that the right part?
It, um, yes, building services.
Building services, building services. Yes, sir. First, I mean, here's the thing. We already discussed, I think I just listened to clearly six, seven, eight lines. First time I heard of that, oh, that stuff was today, I said the door, the dad, and, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but...
And that's why I said, let's try to get sort of immediate priorities today, and then we'll come back together. And after you've had time to look at this list and think about what you brought today, have you made a council meeting, so that they can really just now get involved? Then we come back and say, now, let's look comprehensive, which you kind of...
Two ladies out, uh... But this to me does not need to, I think this needs to go, uh, ask, this needs to go, this needs to go, Richard needs to talk to building services and say, hey, we all worked for the first time. Get your windows, no boiler, no internet, come in. Ah, you know, you're, you're celebrating, again, that's what you did for them. And I really need action, it seems like being started at the...
This is our goal, we own these buildings. Everyone, we should be maintaining our own buildings. So, we should have a strong, uh, uh, that is proactive, that is on top of these things, that is, that has plan. And that says, and the river, I think, I'm told on these orders, they requested this, this money in the budget, and it was cut. But, that said, my, my idea is we need a stronger, uh, or proactive part of that whole, some things are looking at that.
And I did, I was looking to see if that's, how many vacancies they had, and that wasn't that zeroing.
Yeah, he's just trying to do it, I don't think he has to do it. But he's just saying, you hired a German, like, who's cool.
He, he, he goes, he...
Or, 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 with the gas, and they're, and the boiler probably by the whole time with the third party.
Honestly, I think, uh, they're running around right now, solving problems that they have, not looking... That's what they're doing.
They've got a lot of problems.
And they're building a, a job call when you qualify a phone, and not finding them. So, their guys, now, we have a water intersection that has their own, that they're, what happens if it's just, just need water?
There's one or two, I thought there was two water.
Two what?
There are two boilers.
There's two, two boilers.
We need, we need two boilers.
No, we need two boilers.
But I think that's, I think that's a directive, that's to Richard to say, you know, Craig can back me up on this. Those of us that work in nonprofits, when we're writing grants, we're gonna get asked, what's your facilities maintenance plan? And they'll look at that, make sure that we are maintaining things, you know, planning for replacements, so we're not coming back every, next number of years and say, I'm paying three million dollars for a building. And so, I mean, that, that's not uncommon, but that's just a, a, to be a routine thing, probably for all departments to have. It's like their IT guy said, he needed a framework. Of what, they need, they need to come up with what they think it is, and if they're being asked to do, and try to prioritize.
So, for municipal plots, that is no building, and I remember us going through a process, we need to, I'm not a, a really a person, but to re-touch the building, reseal it, reseal the windows. So, I don't know if that ever happened, but that was part of the plan. You don't want water to break in your windows, or, 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 and, so, we have to have a plan for those type of things. We have to identify the possible causes, and then bring key guys and say, hey, this is, this is what we need to...
No, 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 so...
Showering in this building? No. Why don't we need water? Why can't we just use places where water?
It's a heat.
It's a heat. It's a nowadays.
That's what she said, they were trying to plug in heaters and they blew the door.
Basically, HVAC system, or, uh, not, not HVAC. The AC type works, it was pre-done, so, that was... Sorry, boilers off the house.
And boilers, typically, kind of, they have, so... So, water and sewer, affordable housing, yes. And then they have a hiring manager, isn't it corporate? That is gonna be, hopefully, short, very short-term. And Richard...
I'll take more two or three years.
You have to have a city manager, otherwise you've got to change your city charter.
Okay.
And that's not gonna be one of the easiest ones, unless...
Yeah, we're fine.
So, is affordable workforce housing and water and sewer, are they...
Okay. Heard everything.
On three thirty one.
Granted, I, it seems like water and sewer has a plan, but I want confirmation, everybody, that you all heard. Seems like there's a lot of plans, but I didn't hear that anytime till today, and so I like, I don't, am I wrong? Or am I misinterpreting, or what did y'all understand?
Ah, and it's gonna be another five years.
But there's at least a little playing at, at different...
So, on the, the water distribution side and the sewer side, you have a good, a good, a massive plan there. Where what I heard last night was a massive plan on plants, so...
Ten plants, yeah. Very ten. Of course, the water treatment, like, you have a water treatment plant, it's definitely, it's basically, it's, it's very, it's gotta be fixed. I was told by someone who did it, that it was about to fail, it was a portal. I didn't, that's true, I'm sorry, I wouldn't lie to you, it's, it's true.
I, I didn't get it, of course. Also, yes, because... What's, uh, there's, there's spares that are broken, there's wranglings that are, and sandy rambles that are down, and there's...
You do safety...
Lots of...
Not operation, safety...
Lot of, both ways.
So, the sixty-two million dollars, is what I asked, what are we getting? Is that, I should know, in fifteen years, now, that's a little chicken fly.
Well, the master plan said five hundred million, two hundred and eighty, five hundred million.
Okay.
Well, seven hundred fifty million, you know, I mean...
Hey, it is three thirty-three, and I asked them, how long is it gonna be three thirty? So, what I'd like to do, I think you guys have a great discussion, if y'all wanna speak and discuss, then it's fine, but I know that y'all named it our ball, and everybody wants to get new, and I've heard it, it's been a six thirds, so... Uh, so you know what, take a break between the... I heard audit number one. And it was, and again, that should be, it's somewhat a support term, I mean, you get this for the, then you go to your... And wait, wait, it shouldn't be a multi-year to get to twenty twenty-three, it's already been a multi-year. Okay, what is number two?
He can be hired city manager is number one, because we had a city manager that wasn't watching hours. We gotta have a city manager that's watching hours.
That's, you know, you, you, you did?
As opposed to...
Okay, so officially it's started.
It's started, it's already helping.
Okay. All right. Well, check that, is it?
That has somebody watching.
Long building. All right, check that, you say, we're so far ahead, we're gonna check that one off, done.
That's awesome. Okay, let's take number two, then we're not gonna kind of prioritize the rest, but I wanna give y'all something that you know you're looking at right now, as you, because you already identified, other than...
So, we need to work on that.
I don't think sports complex is on the table, man. They've already given us the land, I mean, the community has told them they want it, and, and we, we gotta make it happen. When we, when something's free.
Okay, are y'all in agreement, those four thousand? We're gonna, are you in consensus?
Probably, it's a secret, I'm, I'm already...
Now, listen, for, I've got, about ten million dollars, pledge, I can pledge, but we just now, like, now, they're, they're always good. Three hundred thousand, eight, seventy, maybe six, and Collins put in two fifty already, until we're starting, I need money now, so...
Okay, so, what we've done, we've done number one and two, now, all of the things that are started, are things that you've identified. Those are all things that are gonna be immediate priorities, immediate thing, could get to a year. You could, well, you could look at workforce housing and affordable housing, you're not gonna have built affordable housing or workforce housing, except for some of those who developed, everybody wanna start. So, I mean, that, that's, that's not something you can just turn, turn and burn. So, I mean, we're gonna get these, and then we'll come back, uh, when, I'll give it, Cal, and then Richard, between Cal, because I'm, I'm excited to come back. And we'll take these, and then we'll build, um, and we may wanna live more, more in, in the various departments as well, they need to burn them down.
Yeah, I, I stopped there, I meant to say this earlier, but I don't know how, I, it's not on the list, but, things that are still different on the list, but, uh, I'm actually downtown, much of what we're, like, you improve, or, uh, you know, like, you, yeah, I, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, I don't have coordination, y'all, but I wanna throw it out, because it's something we can...
With, with, I think with Mr. Hennywood, I think with you, they played that city.
I probably oughta add, add food trucks, and, and, really, we do regulations that would increase downtown, like a restaurant, uh, or live venue. If, put it in the downtown, I see what I'm saying, if we're gonna start this construction project, uh, but...
Trucks down, and people have established those processes downtown.
Yeah, but you'd be surprised, I could come, and then it'll never, there'll be something else.
I, I would also say this, just because he's already left, but I have, I was seeing that, I'm pretty clear. I said, I, I know the food truck port and all those parts, part of the seats plate, so, you may wonder, and Perry's already left, but I think...
Okay, we'll unify...
Together, as I...
That, that is one of the problems, and that's one thing I discussed.
Turnkey's...
Hey, it's great that we're putting in the, the power for food trucks out here, but now we gotta clarify regulations, so we can actually have food trucks, and then definitely, we're gonna go on that. And so, you know, one of the things I've heard done, and we didn't get to the committee, but I, I'd like to figure out a way to look at, you know, some of these older regulations that could be cleaned up, like the food truck ordinance, where, why do we have a cap? Why, why do we have fifty licenses per year, that we can't have any more than fifty, so they're all headed out January?
But I'm, I'm actually, food trucks are one of the main, my facet of, listen, uh, the O C thing right here, about the cannabis thing right here, what do we wanna do in the city? To make downtown more attractive to people who are just being, uh, but have a plan that's cohesive with the cannabis plant, put all the planters together, instead of being choppy, rather than choppy.
Well, we got a master plan out there, which we're doing, which, uh, has some different components on there, and a library on there, and that's kind of the origin of this courthouse conversation where it went. But we've gotta figure out how to stand out to counties, say, all right, here's what, here's what you're doing, here's what we're doing, here's the library's doing, how do we split all this?
I think you have some kind of community that lives on, yeah, and, and people that care about, you know, town.
So, as you hear, you can see, and...
Means.
Means.
But, I mean, in version, you have, you have municipalities and the government bodies coming together to discuss it now.
Yeah, that's a part of it. And I don't wanna say it, but...
I want you to discuss, look out, um, talking about coming out the edge, talking about roads, rain view, ditch, rain is been done, the road, we can be fixed.
Don't read that, what I...
They come out, they understand.
Yeah, don't read that, we need to do it less, because that's, I mean, it's, it's...
It's just here, it's not, it's not, people are not, they're not like twenty. Some of them are gonna stay in these hotels right there. If we, if we expect, uh, what we expect out of the sports complex, those hotels will one day, one, people gonna stay over here, and they're gonna be, be a chef. So, we'll have to fix the south side, I ain't talking about homes, but same business, in order for them people to come from downtown, like, that.
My way, I, can I pull my hundred-foot jackrabbit out? Because, by the way, here's not the tallest jackrabbit in the world. We could have them up to your balls, Texas, it pisses me off. Look out there, a hundred foot, there never will be none. We could right down there, and have grand entrance in there, count them, five, three, and three, five.
You want that to look like a channel, or some people coming in?
Well, I said, and I hope y'all are all making notes and thinking, it's good, because when we get back together, and, you know, really, a com- a more comprehensive plan, I think these are all things that you wanna talk about this time. And we're gonna take an hour and a half, maybe two hours to do that. That's, this, I think, gets you to where you can have your immediate direction. Are y'all okay with that?
Just so you know, it's gonna be...
It is three forty-one, and our hydro link's gone. All right? The mayor, I have you?
Say, Tab, I can get notes, we're talking...
Okay, and I'm gonna give this to Norma. So, so she can include it, because she could have taken notes, and today did.
All right, thank you so much for that. We kept the sword on track. All right, guys, uh, before we get out of here, just wanna thank Lori for showing up today, wanna thank everyone for coming, participating, our citizens, they showed up, thank you guys so much, uh, for coming to be a part of this. Most of that much I enjoyed, our city employees, staff, and all the, especially, uh, decent in the city. Uh, probably just want to have a motion to adjourn, so I didn't attend to... Well, maybe, did you want Norma to go over her boards? Y'all, y'all gotta, did not keep another thing. Unfortunately, it's four o'clock, almost four, about four o'clock. So, I think this is, no workshop, there's no workshop. What you did, which, uh, all our...
Council meeting. So, if, if I put a meeting on the council meeting, that's six, five, or, you know, six, four, five, six, four, five.
We got it right now, y'all, tell me that. Good? We're all sitting here, and then we'll go to minutes, go back and order, man, and go, uh, go back to, to number seven.
Yeah, talk that. And council, now, we see they bound the boards and commissions, but this is a little bit of knowledge, so this change has y'all appointed, y'all board members, so, in the first section, the first part changes, it lists all the boards and commissions. they were appointed, who's the appointment is, so y'all will know which appointee is your appointment, and then it has a term expiration date on those, so if you can just take a look at that, if it says appointed by council, that means anybody, any member of the city council that's ready to work, a recommend, and paying for the entire city council to approve, or to recommend to be appointed on that board, uh, certain boards require, uh, requirement qualifications, for example, building board appeals, it requires a attrition, an arrangement, and if you notice, the expiration dates are expired, the council had stated that because there was a lack of applications, fortunately, uh, building board appeals have not been met, uh, in a few years, and hasn't been, but that is, uh, the reason why the expiration dates aren't activated, uh, because the lack of, uh, applications, or the particular, uh, specialized, uh, requirements that are needed. So, let's go to part of that.
Let me just, I'm prepared for my next question, like, probably get first one, Angel Board's Foundation, first one, Dan Howard, by the mayor, but I see it's already expired.
Correct.
Why do you call the name for the meeting on Tuesday?
Yes, so it's on the agenda for Tuesday, what I do is, like, isolate the board members turned shut up, or in a month, of course, you know, working back, but, uh, what I normally see, I'll take, um, direction of how they wish to do the process, or, now, the current process is, if the board member is up, what, uh, the city secretary's office does, which will reach out to the board member, and just ask them, are you willing to serve again? If not, like, that is no, I relate to the council, but if the board member is aware that the council has a final decision, not necessarily that they're gonna be appointed, they just wanted to give that information to the council, if you're still willing to serve. But they do require, uh, certain boards to have attendance requirements, so if they only have attendance requirements, they automatically vacate the meeting.
Let, let's say, I wanna watch someone else, they need to send in an application, or we can, they can send an application.
Yes, and let me tell you why, the application is, what I do is, I just say it real quickly, because some board members have requirements that they're taught that requires you live inside city limits, I just make sure that you live inside city limits, and that, at that point, I'll authorize the entire council, but when I receive that application, I hold on to it until it's time to, for council to consider it, I'll look forward to you, they're ready, and that's a, for council, when I hear a decision is made, I want.
Can you forward us that application, we can, you do that, my thing, or whatever you can.
Yes, and it helps me with contact information, and what else, when council wants it, I can, uh, send that to, probably documents, and a letter, and all of this stuff, and if a member is not appointed, what we do, we send that, a letter for their service on the board, signed by the mayor. Yes, so, uh, council has the, uh, description of, for your being, uh, a board member, as long as it's, it, y'all will let email that contact to the general, we have a requirement posted, so that's not a problem, and on this, six o'clock meeting coming up, we have the entire, uh, this is on, this is on the agenda, so council can discuss, um, all the boards that are scheduled, yes. Again, I highlighted the one that already expired, and then at that point, council can go.
And I'm sorry, I know you mentioned this, but, you know, I'm looking through, one catches my eye, she was very, um, just for preservation, I know that board's had you a lot, thirty years, but, like, she took a job in a little camp, so, I mean, it's not like we get to the emergency reappointing back position, but, you know, when you're looking through, I knew some people who were really going to live here, so.
I can give that information, that, uh, yeah, that.
Open the spots up.
Yes, absolutely.
For the, for the, for the president, you know, for the, for the, for the, you know, come back there, for, I mean, it does, they, 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 they are all some of them.
Maybe one person's been in that.
She is up there.
Yes, behind the rest of it is the, uh, description of the board, that way you have some knowledge about what they do, and then the actual contact information of the board members.
That was it?
Yeah.
You have any other questions? Thank you, Norma.
All right, thanks.
Well, that's on Tuesday, again, so that's my, so, y'all go ahead and ask that.
And the reason I don't send the application to me, if you want to receive them, is sometimes they get lost in the mail, so I like to, to deal with, y'all, while I'm, to, and I keep the application active for a year.
But I need ways to eat that.
Okay.
No. I can wait till my age. Yes, okay, I need to eat for now.
Okay, and every time I work, or, I'm, I'm taking to, to council, or.
Just order them, whatever, just, just so everybody knows, we've got one, two, three slots available, so they should be thinking about that. Max is gone, modest gone, smaller gone, and I don't have a slot, so.
And there's the one where, uh, we'll, we'll discuss on Tuesday, that's, that's official.
This is the official.
You can read the whole.
Yeah, well, maybe we're pointing out, maybe we're.
So, council will discuss, again, there are the boards and commissions they wish to give.
They're not starting that up.
No, no, that's not.
I'm operating from that.
Pretty able.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Because I, I, we, we, we had a group, we did, we passed all this stuff off, and, or, you know, who's, uh, my, you know, I was, I'm, I'm sensitive, so if it's, um, there's a, there's a, you know, that, 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 you need to group to discuss, passing off of, like, something that would be ready to present to council, or if not, having to do this, is to do something that I would, as our group, we would say, hey, we need to make this private.
So, just to, to, not to, you know, listen to this, but something, me, I've got that drop of cow with Lori here, and she'll understand, kind of, where my brain is, you know, my role is the committees that do so much of the work, and when I look through this list of committees, you know, there are things that, that I see like this, that could benefit from having a committee, where we need to start going on the line, and, okay, now, we're crossing over into, because something that, that I talked about was, you know, I could call it a bi-committee, but, you know, we need to look at the charter, we need to look at the, the policies, we need to look at the handbook, we need to look at those things, but, you know, then, then I start to think, well, I'm a marketing committee, and, you know, mine has all these other things, well, we can help her with that, and, and so, you know, some guidance on the creation of committees, what, and that.
I would, I would, I would jump here, right, sorry, Richard. Uh, I've been very, very careful to be, make sure we always follow a committee, or an advisory council, because boards have legal, and a lot of people are called advisory boards, or by, so make sure that you stay away from calling anything a board, and then, um, I had, it, a lot of people were talking about several things, and I had asked, did y'all have, did y'all need to send a notice, because the question, you know, about, you know, what, how do you give a report to a committee? Well, you maybe don't want them to come to come every time, and stand up here, and take forty-five minutes. Ask people to do, like, maybe a quarterly written report, so you know that they're meeting, or they're not meeting, and what they're doing, and what they're discussing, and then that, for that, this becomes your responsibility with what you need to read back, but, you know, as for written reports, so you have that versus discussion.
And maybe it depends on the topic, so, we used to have, we were asking about, yeah, like, you know, we used to have a finance, a council finance committee, and, so, but, what happened there was, members that weren't on that committee felt like they weren't getting any information, and so, everybody started coming to the finance committee, which was prior to the briefing, which led, I think, to the work sessions, so, if, if it makes sense to have, then, then have it, if it's, that's lacking utilities, that's an operational issue, but, never merci, get, uh, additional eyes on a problem, so, that's okay, um, but you're really, in that instance, um, advising about, um, master plans and major projects that are gonna come to the rest of the council.
Yeah, if that's what we're gonna do, that's what he's saying, so, if you said, I'm gonna deal, I want you to take this as, this is what we're looking at, this, if we don't do this, then this part falls, and, and so, we got that information, and it's easy for me to turn it out, and then somebody else.
We used to have an intergovernmental license, uh, council committee, and, and, and if things aren't happening, if you find me, then it kind of goes away, it doesn't, it never meet, but, and, maybe it's time for me to stay yet, we have the courthouse going up, and some other things happening.
One of the things we did the last three, four years, was like, mine is wrong, and it does force them to leave the committee, that's official, so, and I know we're under this, where it was on the animal shelter, if you're a voting member of that committee, when it comes to council, you've got to respect, so we made non-voting members out of council to have on that board, okay, so you could vote, and it's important, every council member has to vote, and not be cut out because of the, of the committee.
And, 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 and.
And, 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 we thought, we have a, it's also, or, remember, all these committees, we're just gonna have to run them through the Texas Home Meetings Act, and make sure we don't have to have video, if not have, sort of thing.
Minutes.
That's minutes, there are all kinds of, we're looking at that, and, well, I'm not a problem, a lot, a lot, just, this is discrimination, for, I, is this, I just, when you start breaking this apart piece by piece, and that, you know, council, they're talking about, how you're ever gonna get this stuff done, and in my mind, it's like, well, you know, if you've gotten interested in the sports complex and utility, well, let's give that to, to, to Henny, and you move this on that, like downtown, and, and, and.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that, that's, you know, breaking it out, and finding your areas of focus, that, that, okay, you know, you go do on that, and then, and figure out a way, and then it comes back to me, that that's the media work, or the, the reports back, and the whole, and, and that's not something that's worked, or should get done, or should doesn't, I don't know, and that's why I had to get that on here, to kind of discuss a little bit about, you know, some of the stuff is the business of the city that lives over here, and some of the stuff is the business of the council, and that, lives over here, or the communities, or, you know, however, our, our, this stuff is, I mean, how is this gonna enter, that could happen, maybe, if you're, Lori, you know, maybe, maybe to death, but, nothing, so, again, I just, I don't, I don't wanna do that, that's, or, if you look at this, there's already lots of committees that the city has, has to fill, both, Motran, M V O, uh, that's the regional planning committee, I can help me out, um, I, you know, these are, uh, I think, but there's partnership, uh, Easy Rider, Easy Rider, I mean, the ones that were obligated to, and they take time, I'm just telling you, you just, you never will get, you'll, you'll get fired, if you won't give me off.
One, one thing I might think about, is if you could do, if you could possibly do that, this, I, I can speak for, I can, let's see, people, and, and, you could possibly use an ad hoc task force, uh, that are, that have a single purpose, limited schedule, and maybe then, like you mentioned, make, maybe that is work with Mike, look at communication plan, make some recommendations, they're, they're advisory, they, they've got the singles, they've got limited purposes, and limited times, and then you could probably bring in some people from the community to commit to some of those things, and have expertise, where they may not have, you may not have expertise on these, but they're not full commission committees.
I think there's a, a, I mean, they're a large committee, but, at what point is Mike gonna go to your work?
No, no, please, that's what I'm just tapping, they have ideas, and they step away, and then, they, they, they're, they're impotations.
I know, but, so, you create the task force, or whatever, that does cause confusion for that court, and, 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 And we'll leave it out there for at least thirty days, I guarantee you, they're going to start coming in, you're going to have some good candidates. At, after we bring them in, I'll, I'll, after we, after we bring, after, after the applications, you will see every application, okay? I will rank them for you, but you will see every application, and I'll give you a top, I'm just from one to the bottom, I mean, hopefully we'll have fifteen of them, and you're going to get some excellent candidates. And at that point, um, I'll ask you to narrow down, top ten, and I'll ask you to narrow down to top five. Once we get to the top five, um, that's what we'll do, we'll be a background, we'll do criminal background, we'll do financial credit background, on all of them, and I'll, I'll cut that off. Just kind of outside, see that, that's what they do, okay? Um, once that happens, um, um, we'll get back together, and in those top five, I'll ask you to go with three. You go four, but I would say go with three. And I'll do that, I'll contact those top five, so you're in, you're out, you're in, you're in, you're in, and we'll set up interviews, big day, okay? That day will be a long day for you, and it will be a long day for the candidates, because we'll bring them in, they'll spend time, get a, and sort of sound. They'll be close to me, because you all can go on to it. Um, that morning, afternoon, we'll actually, we'll come in, eat lunch, we'll invite all the park heads, plenty of lunch with them, and, um, get to know each other. Uh, then we'll, afternoon, we'll be interviewed, we'll be able to communicate to the three candidates, individuals, and then in the evening, uh, we'll open down all, where a large, um, um, one guy, anybody that's interested, come to the meeting, we'll create an email for anybody that wants to come to that. Um, I'll ask the candidates to introduce themselves to the community, so, in this process, you're watching all this interaction. Benefit is, community's involved, staff's involved, once they introduce themselves, we'll sit down at three big tables, okay? Public takes their seats, each candidate hits every table, and it's, and the candidates get questions from the public, okay? So, you can watch all this happen, and then after the meeting, after that, um, I'll probably go into executive session, uh, you guys will discuss, um, I don't think I offer that, because, I mean, you're going to have that for, definitely, but we're, we're, we're letting the public participate by sending, uh, having them send an email to you guys, basically, that says, this is who I like, who you're flying, so they like that, um, staff will be involved, so, once that happens, like I said, after the interview, I'll tell you, you guys are going to have that, uh, who you like. Um, but I've been in situations where council credit, um, council like one candidate for a second, third, and double, and then the process. But, the staff was called, the public was involved, that council listened to both those groups, and actually brought the department heads in at one time, and, uh, I mean, and, um, and the department heads knew, it's council's call, it's council's decision, but the council doesn't, the, the department heads, and they actually hired, because those two were so close, they went with the group, the, the candidates, the staff, most liked. So, again, it's your decision throughout the process, I will open down, and I guarantee you will have two candidates, and, um, they'll be good prospects. And if the city kind of done that with, for like, the status and ownership, player quality.
Well, bless you, you have, uh, make that offer, I have plenty of thirty days to, to, to give their notice of procedure in.
Yes, I would expect them to give at least thirty days, um, unless they're unemployed, um, you know, I quit, I go, because they haven't done here first day, make first.
Any questions for, um, council that's processed?
I think we're already in, they, they, they're classes out.
All right, if you have any other questions or comments, we'll adjourn, and we want to thank you all for your time.